Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock, February 24th, 2022. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. First thing we will take up is consideration of the adoption of Assembly Bill 361, findings authorizing teleconference meeting during a state of emergency.
I'm sorry, Chair. I wanted to interrupt. I'm not seeing our legal counsel in the Zoom room yet.
Okay, we can just wait.
In the meantime, Madam Chair, the one line that jumps out to me this month as opposed to last month is on number four, item number four on the back page, requiring all of the commissioners to teleconference in for meeting. I'm not sure that I would agree that's still necessary.
Yeah, I don't either. Jake, is Nicole or is counsel on the Zoom?
Yes, we do have Nicole in the Zoom room. And she should be able to unmute.
Yes, she's, yes, and now we can see her.
Good morning. Nicole, can you hear us? Okay.
I'll be checking in with her here, sorry.
Thank you. So then, do we need to make any changes on that? Or are we just going to approve as is?
I know if we approve as is, then we're endorsing another 30 days of all of us zooming in.
Yeah, I don't want to do that.
But what the supervisors did on Tuesday is they have a gap between that seat and this seat, and then two sit down there just to create some social distancing.
Okay.
But I think all we have to do is find that it's no longer, we no longer find that all commissioners must Zoom.
Okay.
Is that correct, Nicole? Oh, poor Nicole.
Jake.
All eyes on Nicole.
Yeah, it does appear that she's having issues with her audio. I'm working on it with her now, trying to contact her.
Just FYI to the audience, Nicole Johnson is our counsel, and it's always good to have her ears and eyes on everything we do.
Morning.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, counsel. Can you hear me, Nicole? This is John Hess.
Yes, now I can hear. For a second there, my apologies. I didn't have sound.
No worries. We were discussing item number four on the second page of the resolution. And we were, Chairman or Commissioner Chavez hasn't had a chance to weigh in yet, but we were thinking that the line requiring all of the commissioners to teleconference in for meetings is no longer what we would find.
Okay, yes. And you have a number of options here. You're not required to make the findings on the offered resolution. That is a draft for your consideration. I do have suggested language that would be similar to what, if your commission finds that action it still should be taken in relation to the existing emergency, if there is one, then I have language that would be similar to what had been adopted prior to that language that would allow for remote attendance for commissioners should your commission determine that the circumstances warrant remote attendance. However, you also have the option of, if your commission finds that it's no longer, the emergency no longer requires remote attendance, you also have the option of not making findings today and returning to the Brown Act requirements as they are generally, which is that your attendance remotely, you would not be attending remotely unless and until anyone who does posts, makes the location accessible and under the general rules for the Brown Act usually, and that you would all attend physically in the meetings. So that is an option. You don't have to make findings today if you, if your commission determines that the emergency does not warrant it. That doesn't mean you cannot or that you would not have in-person precautionary measures like six-foot distances and masks. These findings relate only to remote attendance. So whether or not your commission will be, is under the emergency requirement, finding it necessary to have remote attendance in order for your business to continue during the emergency. So if you would like, and if you have found that, or you can find that the emergency warrants that some or many of you may need to attend remotely going forward during this emergency in the next 30 days, then I have language that would meet that criteria.
Okay.
That sounds like the right language.
Yes.
Maybe Commissioner Chavez wants to chime in.
I mean, I can read it to you, and then you can discuss it if you would like.
Please.
Okay. So number four would be replaced with, "The Planning Commission Finds That Social Distancing Remains Necessary And That Remote Attendance By Members Through Teleconferencing Is Allowed."
That works for me.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that?
You would be adopting a resolution with that amendment through motion.
So I move that we adopt the resolution as amended with the language provided by counsel?
I would second that.
Roll call vote. Oh, you're not on your mic.
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the consideration of the approval of minutes from the December 16th, 2021, and the January 13th, 2022 Planning Commission hearings. Looking for motion to approve the minutes?
I so approve, or I so move.
Second.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion shall carry, and we are showing a time of 9:08. We will go ahead and start, excuse me. We are looking for citizens' input. If there is anybody wishing to speak on anything that is not on the agenda today, feel free to approach the podium, or if you are in the Zoom room, you're welcome to raise your hand. Again, anything not pertaining to an agenda item today. Jake, any hands in the Zoom room?
At this time, there are no hands in the Zoom room. We do have one phone participant. I'd like to remind that individual or anyone present in the phone that you could raise your hand by dialing star nine, I believe. Yes, star nine. Thank you. And they're still up. And with that, there are one hand raised in the Zoom room. Should I take that hand now?
Please, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, looks like Sharon, I've given you permission to speak. And I have asked you to unmute. All right, looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name? Hello, Sharon, if you can hear me. You're unmuted. We're not getting audio from you. If you could, please confirm your first and last name.
All right, Jake. So since she is having technical difficulty, we will go ahead and close citizens' input and move forward.
We can always reopen.
Yeah, and she'll have a chance to speak at, or whoever will have a chance to speak at a later date, time. So we're going to go ahead and close citizens' input and move on to item agenda, item number one. This is a major, excuse me, I got to start over. It's a public hearing on consideration of a major use permit UP 20-75 and a mitigated negative declaration IS 20-88. The project applicant, North Coast Select Incorporated, is proposing a co-location slash clustering of permits for cannabis cultivation, for a cannabis cultivation operation to allow 70,560 square feet of mixed light canopy area within greenhouses equipped with air filtration systems in a total of 168,680 square feet cultivation area. The project includes additional greenhouses for immature plants, a processing facility, a drying building, 32 2,500 gallon water tanks, security, and a perimeter fence. The project is located at 1496 Bell Hill Road, Calceville, California, and further described as APNs 017-002-02007-010-24 and 017-002-01. Good morning, sit here.
So today's agenda, we're going down a list of topics and findings for North Coast Select Cannabis Cultivation Project. This is a continued item from January 13th of this year. I just want to inform you that the project description and analysis have not changed since then. However, there are two additional updates, which is a new public comment that was green sheet and an engineered site plan of the greenhouse structures in Attachment 3.
We're just getting everything connected so we can share our screen with everyone. If you could just bear with us.
It looks like we lost internet?
Looking into it right now.
Oh, like?
Like, the courthouse, yeah.
Oh, we thought it was us. Yay!
Just in case everybody, I don't know who out in the Zoom world can hear us, but apparently we have lost internet at the courthouse. So, stand by.
Yeah, we have internal.
Feels like Ukraine, the cyber attack. Because I'm troubled about it, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, AT&amp;T guys weren't getting the booth and he brought us down.
It's not just the courthouse?
It's, no, it's the courthouse. And everything the courthouse supports. Yes, we have, we have network, but we don't have internet. All right, I'll be right. One sec.
Are you sure on battery?
This computer is not meant to be on battery.
Oh, okay.
It's always supposed to be plugged in, but. I was going to do it over there if I need to.
Quick update. We are going to take a brief recess until 9:30. I'm showing a time right now of 9:18. We are working on technical difficulties with internet here at the courthouse. So we, I will check back in with you at 9:30. Thank you.
All right, and it looks like legal counsel is here. Nicole, just confirm for me when you get a chance.
Yes, I'm here.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Although I cannot start my video just to let you know.
Okay, I have turned on the ability for you.
Thank you.
There we go. Oh, yes, and now we have our other planning commissioner. Yes, okay, it looks like we are ready to proceed.
I'm showing a time of 9:27. Do I need to wait till 9:30?
Yes.
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Okay, it has officially turned 9:30. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us and being patient. We are on, we're currently on item number one, and I believe staff has prepared our report.
Good morning again. And we're going to go ahead and start over due to the technical issue. So today's agenda, we're going to go down a list of topics and findings. And for, well, for North Coast Select, this is a continued item from January 13th of this year. I just want to inform again that the project description and analysis have not changed since then. However, there's, there are two additional updates, which is a new public comment that was green sheet and an engineered site plan of the greenhouse structure in Attachment 3. The applicant is seeking approval for a major use permit to cultivate cannabis with a 70,560 square feet canopy area and a 168,680 square feet cultivation area within greenhouse structures. The project includes five permit types as detailed in the staff report to allow the total canopy area. It is an allowable use under the zoning designation for agriculture and meets the parcel size criteria. The site is within the Big Valley District American Viticulture Area and the Farmland Protection Zone. The project parcel is surrounded by zoning designation agricultural preserve to the north and southeast. To the east and west of the parcel are designated as zoning agriculture. To the south is rural residential. The surrounding parcel ranges from 1.35 to 80 acres in size. Several residential areas and offsite residents surround the parcel. However, the nearest is approximately 800 feet on the proposed cultivation site. The site is surrounded by a mixture of agriculture, agricultural industry and residential dwelling. The applicant is seeking approval for a major use permit to cultivate cannabis. Due to the location of the project being within farmland protection zone, the applicant will be limited to greenhouse structures equipped with carbon filtration system to mitigate potential pesticide drift and odor. The proposed improvement will also include additional greenhouses for immature plants, a 5,000 square feet processing facility with ADA compliant restroom, 2,400 square feet driving, drying building, and 32,250 gallon water tanks with four at each greenhouse structures. The project will use the existing well to pump into the proposed water tank, gravity-fed to the cultivation area through groundwater, underground water lines, and deliver to the plants through drip irrigation method. The project employees will be approximately 18 during peak season. The project area is currently developed with an existing grape vineyard, existing abandoned single-family residential wood septic system, small outbuildings, and frost protection agricultural reservoir. None of the existing infrastructure will be used in the proposed operation. The parcel is currently zoned as agricultural industry and historically used for agricultural intensive purposes. A site visit was conducted on October 1st of 2020 with code enforcement to verify existing condition and if it meets fire safety standards. The site location is fully developed with agricultural use since 1993, based on Google aerial footage. However, the applicant noted that the development took place as far as mid-1980s. Another site visit was conducted recently with Commissioner Fields due to the concerns of the nearby Adobe Creek. The area is fairly flat with low potential of runoff to the creek due to natural buffers and setbacks in place. Staff reviewed the project for concurrence with the following listed and determined that it is consistent with Lake County General Plan, Calceville Area Plan, and zoning ordinance. Commercial cannabis cultivation is an allowable within this land use designation and is located appropriately to support the use. The project is located in an existing agricultural area where the practice of cultivation and crop production is the primary use. On July 27, 2021, the Lake County Board of Supervisor declared a local emergency due to the drought condition and requires land use applicant to provide and enhance water analysis under ordinance 3106. The applicant meets the following general plan by satisfying ordinance 3106 by providing a hydrology report and providing a drought management plan, which includes installing a water meter and using a drip irrigation method for conservation. The water storage tank will be equipped with float valves to prevent overflow and runoff of irrigation water when full. Safety valve will be equipped to supply lines in case of the flow of water needs to be stopped in an emergency. The goals of agricultural resources by proposing their project to cultivate cannabis within greenhouse is required by the county ordinance 3101 to preserve and protect traditional farming, while also diversifying the agricultural production. Land use for maintaining a healthy and diverse local economy for the future of Lake County promoting economic development by promoting employment, local employment opportunity. To ensure the protection of all agricultural industries within the county, lands within the farmland protection zone shall be indoors within an enclosed structure equipped with filtration system that prevents movement of odors, pesticides, and other airborne contaminants out of or into the structure. The proposed project meets this goal as a diverse economic base within the agricultural industry. The proposed project meets the Calceville Area Plan when it comes to the land use designation for agricultural crop production. Under goal 5.1A-1, the project is located within an agriculture zone with a base zone for agricultural industry, which is used for intensive agricultural use with the surrounding areas conducting similar uses. Also, it is located within a farmland protection zone due to the diversity of crops within the proximity. The project scope meets the requirement of preserving and minimizing potential impacts of the surrounding diverse agricultural use by cultivating within an enclosed structure, which allows the type of agricultural practice within these areas to occur and operate cohesively. The project scope meets the agricultural zoning district due to the allowable use under the zoning designation agriculture upon the approval and issuance of a major or minor use permit. The base zoning designation for this project area site is agriculture. However, there are several combining districts associated with the parcel. The proposed project proposal does not apply to twenty-eight or Article twenty-eight. However, there is an existing residential dwelling property incidental to the project, which is currently not proposed as part of the cultivation operation. Due to the zoning designation and intensive use of agriculture within this combining district, if an occupant decide to utilize the property, they will need to apply for zoning clearance to reside on the property and shall be required to sign a statement of acknowledgement under Article twenty-eight. Staff also wants to note that this district is intended to be applied to properties that are intensively farmed, such as but not limited to vineyard, orchards, nurseries, field, and row crops, and that this district should be applied where restricted agricultural chemical is, as stated, under this article is commonly used. The location of the project does not apply to the requirements as set in Article thirty-six within the floodway fringe combining district because the proposed cultivation area is outside of the designated flood hazard that would include additional regulations set in this article. Article thirty-seven applies to regulatory setbacks to preserve, protect, and restore significant riparian system, streams, and their riparian aquatic and woodland habitats. The nearest water course is Adobe Creek. Under Article thirty-seven, additional requirement includes a thirty feet setbacks from the water course. However, under Article twenty-seven, the project location shall be setback a hundred feet from all water courses. The project's site location and scope of the project meets the additional regulation under the combining district within Article thirty-six, thirty-seven, and twenty-eight. The initial study found that the project could cause potentially significant impacts to aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, tribal cultural resources, geology, soil, hydrology, hazardous materials, and noise. However, with the incorporation of the mitigation measures below, all impacts can be reduced to less than significant level with the following mitigation measures in Attachment Six and in the staff report. However, staff would like to address that the mandatory findings of the, of the project analysis, the site location is within a predisturbed area used for intensive agriculture for decades. The current agricultural crop existing is a grape vineyard. Per size, the proposed cannabis cultivation size will, I mean site will utilize less resources than that of a grape vineyard to be, that will be removed, that is removed. The potential impact of crop conversion is similar for any agricultural crop, including cannabis, which is normally exempt. However, the project involves the construction of several buildings and structures, including greenhouses, processing facility, and drying facility that otherwise would not be exempt. Therefore, the following discussion above within this section is incorporated to mitigate any potential impacts from the implementation of the project. In addition to the mitigation measures listed in the staff report and the following attachment, the applicant will apply for permits from various agencies, including the Bureau of Cannabis Control, the State Water Quality Control Board, and any other applicable agencies to operate a commercial cannabis cultivation operation. The applicant also will comply with state regulatory setbacks requirement and restriction that would then further minimize potential impact to the environment that address natural resources. The, the project scope complies with the minimum regulatory requirements set by the local ordinance to address the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the, of those working or residing near the proposed use. Prior to the applicant constructing any type of structure, the applicant shall obtain the necessary permits and licenses from the appropriate federal, state, and/or local government agencies. Additionally, the CDD would conduct annual compliance monitoring inspection during cultivation season to ensure compliance with the county ordinance, the approved property management plan, mitigation measures, and conditions of approval. The location and size for the project site complies with the local ordinance regulation regarding use and setbacks. The site is accessed through Bell Hill Road, a county maintained road with adequate road width. Bell Hill Road and the driveway to, to the cultivation site have reasonable adequate accommodation for the proposed use with some improvement which is made as a condition of approval. The project's site will utilize an onsite well and portable toilets until the construction of the processing facility. Additionally, the project parcel has adequate emergency service protection through the Lake County Sheriff Office, California Highway Patrol, the Kelseyville Fire Protection District. The applicant is required to adhere to all applicable local, state, and federal regulation mitigation measure and condition of approval intended to ensure adequate services and maintain safety at the site. The cultivation of the commercial cannabis is a permitted use within agriculture zoning district upon securing a major use permit according to Article twenty-seven of the Lake County zoning ordinance. Additionally, the Lake County General Plan does not have any provision specifically for commercial cannabis, but both of the general plan and the Kelseyville Area Plan have provision for economic development, water resources, and agricultural resources, land use compatibility. The parcel does not have any outstanding or active violation on the property. Staff also recommends the approval of the major use permit UP twenty dash seventy-five for the following findings on the previous slide and the inclusion of the conditions upon the approval of the major use permit in Attachment Four. Staff recommends that the planning commission takes the following action to adopt the mitigated negative declaration IS twenty dash eight-eight or major use permit UP twenty dash seventy-five with the following findings found in Attachment Six and Attachment Four. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you so much for that. Go ahead and get these lights on. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments for the applicant before we open it up for public comment? Do you believe the applicant is here?
Hello? Yes, Sofiane Hamouda, I'm the consultant, and the applicant is here.
Good morning.
Ron Deek.
Anything at this time?
Questions?
Yes, I had one question. The greenhouses and the other structures.
Into the mic. Sorry.
Can you hear me now? The greenhouses and the other structures will be placed on a cement pad?
That is correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chavez, do you have any questions before we open it up for public comment?
No questions yet.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I may, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Just before you move forward, for your information, I just wanted to make it clear because there is some reference in the report from staff about electrical generators. And I wanted to make it clear that in Article twenty-seven, twenty-seven point thirteen, parenthetical AT one, Romanet three, Part D, under electrical generators, for mixed light and indoor cultivation, the use of generators is prohibited. So while generators, the impact of generators may have been analyzed within the report in relation to this project, you are not being asked, and indeed, under the ordinance cannot approve the use of generators with this project. Just so, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear because I wasn't sure that it was.
Thank you for the, for the clarification on that.
Nicole, is it also true, though, that in the case of a power outage or a short-term emergency of some kind, that generators can be used? Not, not that I'm a fan of full-time generator use by any means.
That is correct. Under that code section, ordinance section that I cited, generators for temporary use are allowed during a power outage or an emergency that is beyond the permit's control. And typically, that includes things like emergencies declared by the county, emergencies declared by the state, something like a power safety shut-off from PG&E, something beyond the control of the applicant. That would not include things like an applicant finding themselves in a circumstance in which the generator would be useful in processing their product because they did not have the facilities on-site at the time, or they misjudged the amount of power they would need, or the project parameters were not, were not calculated correctly upfront, or they find themselves, something that the project applicant could anticipate and plan for would not be covered under that kind of emergency that would be beyond their control.
Thanks.
Thank you for that. If you guys do not have any questions for the applicant, we will go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone in chambers wishing to speak on this item, feel free to approach the podium. Jake, are there any hands in the Zoom room?
Yes, at this time, it looks like we have one hand raised in the Zoom room.
We can go ahead and take that, please.
All right, looks like the first hand we have raised is from, here, let me change this real quick, sorry.
My name is.
Phone two five seven?
Go ahead, Jake.
My name is Bill Wilson.
Bill Wilson, we're gonna wait and have the person in the Zoom room go ahead and speak first, and then we'll, I'll bring it back to the chamber so you can speak. I apologize. Jake, go ahead with the Zoom comment, please.
All right, phone, seven two five seven, looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Good morning, Bart Levinson. Just wanted to let you know that your, the meeting is not accessible on YouTube at this time, and the volume on Zoom by phone is very low, so it's difficult to hear the content of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know that. I'm, at least, at least we are aware of that now, so we will get, working on that. Jake, is there any other hands in the Zoom room in regards to this agenda item?
Yes, we do have another hand raised in the Zoom room. Sharon Geimer, I've given you permission to speak, and I have asked you to unmute here. All right, looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name for us? Sharon, if you're trying to speak, we cannot hear you. Please check your mic there. We still cannot hear you.
Hey Jake, perhaps she can type her question in on the chat and we can read it, potentially answer it through, I mean, to whoever the question might be towards?
Oh yeah, that is a possibility if that is an outlet that you guys want to support there.
Absolutely, if she's able to type her question, one of us can read it out loud. Are you getting any type of communication with the, with the person on Zoom, Jake?
No, but I will, I'm trying to reach out to them here.
Okay. Thank you.
They have elected to pass for now.
Fair enough. Any other hands in the Zoom room before I bring it back to chambers so that this member of the public can speak? No other hands, Jake?
Correct, at this time, there are no other hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and bring it back to chambers if you would like to go ahead and speak now. Good morning. Just please be sure to state your first and last name, and there is a little green sheet if you could fill out that information when you're done as well.
My name, Bill Wilson, and what other information?
There's a green card down on the podium when you're done speaking. If you could just leave or fill it out and let us have that for our minutes. Thank you. You can do it after you speak if you'd like.
Afterwards?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank the neighboring vineyard person who at a great expense hired somebody to negotiate the conditions of the vineyard. I mean, that was something we all appreciate. But I also am concerned about, are we hearing what we want to be here? Or are we telling the truth? Things like this, I keep on hearing this was an abandoned vineyard where this is going in, and it was not an abandoned vineyard. It was a producing vineyard before they tore it out and planned the thing. We were told last meeting that there was an EIR report done on this vineyard when they put it in, and their county has no record of an EIR report for the vineyard. We were told the water flow in Kelsey and Adobe Creek is next to nothing and it's dry, which is not true. It's a drought year. I'm just wondering, as far as all of the monitoring for security, what is that gonna entail? I mean, if they have motion sensors that start of alarms, is this person that's gonna be available says twenty-four hours, seven days a week? I mean, things like bobcats, raccoons, are they gonna be tripping the alarms? Are we gonna have to be listening to these alarms going until somebody comes and resets the alarms? How is that gonna be handled? The, and, and again, I've, the answer, the question has been answered about all of the other conditions, the filters, the lights have been answered. The bathrooms, they had said were just gonna be outhouses, but they say in their plan that they're gonna put a permitted septic system, wastewater system. They keep on referring to the permitted residences. That residence was built in nineteen forty-three, hasn't been lived in in seventeen years. It is not at all legal to live in, and it's probably dangerous and should be red flagged. The closest other residence is about a quarter mile away. If that's the outhouse, or the bathrooms are septic that they're referring to, I'm sure people aren't gonna be able to use those. But the, and the monitoring of the well, we still don't know how deep it is. I kinda question how the monitor, the well test went. There's no access on top of the well, so someone had to check the depth of it. They said they couldn't check the depth of it because there's a torque limiter down in the well, which I know there isn't when they pulled it out years ago. Two other wells have gone in within that circle of a third mile at a hundred and sixty-two, hundred and sixty-seven feet, but we don't know what aquifer this project is gonna be drawing from, which I think we should know. And lastly, I was told at the last meeting from the person on the consultant that I could ask questions, but he gave no contact information, no phone number. I have no way to get ahold of anybody, and they haven't contacted us. One of the messages from Ms. Hamm was that one of the representatives said they were contacting all of the neighbors about this project, which also is not true. Nobody of the neighborhood has ever been contacted except for the person that supplies the compost and the dirt. Of course, they're gonna be selling to them. So I'm just hoping that we are hearing what they're really gonna do, not just what they think we want to hear as a community.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What do I do with this card when I give it? Fill it back? Just leave it here?
You can just leave it there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak on this item before I give the applicant a chance to respond?
My own comment would be that, yeah, either if the applicant could address some of those questions and/or be supplemented by satire, that would be very helpful.
Did you wanna go ahead and address those questions now, or do you wanna wait for another public comment?
I can address them right now if you'd like.
Okay, sure.
So the, I'll start with the restrooms. The restrooms will not be within the existing residence. They're proposed within the existing, or within the proposed processing facility. The existing vineyard was cultivated up through twenty twenty, so it was active. They have already removed the portion of the vineyard that will be for the greenhouses. Contacting neighbors, Ron has actually been in contact with, I believe, two of the neighbors. So there has been a reach-out, and we have communicated with them. Security, the current security measures are a six-foot
Security, the current security measures are a six-foot fence with security lighting, face down, shielded, covered at all times, and then the security trip alarm is actually by entry, so it's not gonna be flagged off by animals. There is night vision on it, 24/7 recording, and that is kept on-site for, I believe, six months, but that is in the management plan.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Well, depth?
Oh, yes. Looking at the well report here, so the test was in... One second here.
Number 22.
There you go, thank you. It has a 680 gallon per minute at 30 feet. The drawdown was over an eight-hour time period. It started at 92 feet and drew down to 138 and fully recharged within minutes afterwards.
Thank you.
How long was that well test, again?
Eight hours, I believe, but give me one second, I can confirm right here. So it started at 8:30 a.m. and ended at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A little bit more.
Okay, good morning. We can go ahead and have your public comment if you would just state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Philip Moy, M-O-Y. I submitted a written comment to Satur Hamm earlier, as well as one of the panel members. My primary concern relates to the potential adverse impacts to the hitch, spawning hitch and larval hitch in Adobe Creek. This relates to groundwater drawdown and the amount of groundwater being drawn from the well. I did not find the information from the vineyard as to their use of the well and potential impacts on the stream. Did not find any reference to the presence of hitch in the environmental assessment provided by the planning department. So I would like to be sure that those are taken into account as the planning commission prepares its approval for this major use project. My other question relates to the timing of the filling of the 32, 2,500 gallon tanks. Will these be filled during the springtime, when the creek is flowing and the hitch are spawning, the eggs are present? We don't know how much will be drawn. They're talk about a three gallon per minute use of the well, or maybe a six gallon per minute use of the well. This could extend to 17 or 18 days to fill these tanks. Are they gonna pump a greater volume of water in order to fill the tanks faster? And then there was that little confusion of whether the tanks are just gonna be for fire suppression, or are they going to be used for irrigation as well? Sounds like they're gonna be used for irrigation as well. So it's just a little bit about the use of the groundwater, volume of pumping of the groundwater, the timing, and avoiding adverse impacts to the hitch. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Would you like to respond?
Yeah, we can respond to that. So for Adobe Creek, the biological report did address all water courses on site, this is actually the only one. So reading the summary and conclusions, the Adobe Creek, and I'll read it right from it, "There's a Class 1 reach of Adobe Creek just off to the west of the site. However, as long as appropriate setbacks are observed in accordance with State Water Resource Control Board guidelines, then no discharge should occur since the habitat is well outside of the setback and is entirely vegetated." So water, the water control board does require 150-foot setback from any disturbances. We are well beyond that distance. So the biological report did address any impacts to Adobe Creek, and again, we're beyond that setback. In terms of pulling water from the creek, there's... We're obviously using the well on site. The hydrology report does address the sphere of influence, and it does not even reach the creek. So again, presumably, it is not pulling from the creek in that area.
Thank you. Commissioner Fields?
Yeah, I have a question. I have not seen a hydrology report, it's not included in my agenda packet online. I don't see anything here.
Do you by chance have a copy of the hydrology report, Satya?
Could you...
Should... Okay, one second. Did you look on your attachments, Commissioner Fields?
My attachments? I went to the... I usually use the meeting agenda. What I'm concerned about is where the effect of this water consumption on the aquifer, there's a lot of users downstream who are worried about it.
Sorry, I missed that. Can you repeat that?
I said, my concern is, I haven't seen anything addressing the aquifer. There's a lot of other users downstream who are very concerned about that.
For sure. The hydrology report was submitted, and it has been reviewed through the initial study, so that does speak to the aquifer. I'm not sure what sections you'd want me to point out, or, you know, read to you, but basically, I can read some of it unless Satur you have... There we go.
Thank you.
And then, if I may, just add a couple comments to the use of water. I did read this last time via Zoom, but the removal of the vineyard to accommodate the proposed use will actually reduce the amount of water that's being pulled. Just to give you the exact usage, so from 2020, the vineyard used 28 acre feet, that was for irrigation and for the frost protection, for the total 46.83 acres of the vines. The proposed project is then going to keep 36 acres of vines, so they've already removed that space. It'll decrease it by 24% since the use of last year, and that is directly from their own stats on the cultivation and the use of the well.
Did you say 28 acre feet?
28 acre feet for the 2020 water usage, correct.
Okay. Public comment is still open if you would like to approach the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Phil Moy, again. Concerning the setbacks and potential impacts on Adobe Creek, that is surface influence. I'm talking about subsurface and aquifer influence. As Commissioner Field was just speaking to, the potential for groundwater withdrawal could adversely affect the surface water in Adobe Creek. It could pull down the creek level adversely affecting hitch and the spawning hitch. We're not talking about setback, we're not talking about stormwater influence, we're talking about groundwater impacts. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can read a portion of it, and Commissioner Fields, you may be getting that section. For the radius of influence, the utilized... The engineer company utilized the Cooper and Jacob equation, and for that drawdown, it was a 200-foot radius of influence, which again, is outside of the distance to Adobe Creek, so that is what we have on the aquifer at this time.
Phil Moy, again. Right, that equation that they used looked at pumping for one day. It's called a short-term influence equation. There's no specification of how long you plan to pump in order to fill these 32, 2,500 gallon tanks. Are you talking about days of pumping? Are you talking about just a few hours? There's no amount of volume that you're talking about over that. I found the environmental assessment lacking in that regard. So it's all well and good to say your hydrologist looked at this, but I feel that they were... they looked at it rather cursorially and not very adequately. Thank you.
Question for the applicant, this is a phased project, is it not?
Correct, we were actually about to address that.
So in terms of the rate at which that many tanks would be filled, is what, over a four or five-year period, or?
Correct, the total 32 is over that four-year period. Again, so for the first phase, which would be year one, there's one single greenhouse and the processing facility being built, along with four of the water tanks. So it will be... It's not gonna be drawn on all at one time, and we do also include the estimated water usage both in the hydrology report and within the management plan.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Please.
So, again, we have the use of the word phase, and I wanted to remind the commission, I'm sure you remember though, that CEQA uses the word phase for a very specific type of project analysis. So you might wanna clarify with staff, if that is the case here, if this is a CEQA phased project, then a mitigated negative declaration is not an appropriate vehicle for analysis under CEQA. If it is not a phased project, if they're simply breaking the project into timeline parts, but the entirety of the project has been analyzed under CEQA for you today for this mitigated negative declaration, then that would not be a phased project. So you might want to clarify with staff which is true here.
It's stages.
Stages.
Yes.
Thank you. I apologize for the use of the word phase.
The loosely used word. Thank you, Council.
What is the difference between stages and phases?
The phases will be... It's usually... Well, when it's analyzed, it will be analyzed in those phases until, you know, we'll continually analyze it. But we... This is fully analyzed for all of the stages of development.
Meaning, like, the full impact has already been considered? Whether they do it in stages? The initial, like, big picture has already been evaluated? Whether they decide to do it in sections?
May?
Okay, thanks.
Please.
So, under CEQA, if a project is phased, it means that CEQA requires the analysis of every part of a project at the time that you are analyzing it, if you are capable of knowing and understanding the parameters of that project. If there are parts of the project that are to occur in the future that are unknowable now, then a project would be phased in the sense that you would analyze everything you can at this point, and then in the future, when you reached the future phased parts that are knowable at that time, the applicant would return to have CEQA analysis done further on those parts that were unknowable at the original analysis. So it's continued CEQA analysis. Whereas if you are simply breaking a project into stages, it means that you have an understanding of the entire project and all of its elements and all of its parts right now at this time, and they can be analyzed and mitigated now.
Thank you.
Also, also on the staff report, it says, uses the word stages, so just to be clear, that we're not in phases.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I do have someone in chambers who would like to speak again. Three minutes, please.
My name is Bill Wilson, again. I just wanna clarify again on the water use. I'm not sure how, there are no monitors on the well, and I'm not sure how they determine how much water is being used, other than maybe counting sprinkler nozzles and gallons and how many hours. But the difference is, the water being used for irrigating during frost season is at the end of the rainy season, in the springtime, when the aquifers are filled. The rest of the year during the summertime, the water usage is far less than what the cannabis is gonna be using. They're gonna be using that same high quality all year through the summer when everybody else needs water. The highest use for the vineyards is during frost season, is about five hours a day for possibly 10 hours, 10 days a season, and so I can't see how they compare the water use to that. The time that they're gonna be using the water was when everybody wants water. The time when the grapes use it is when nobody really needs water, 'cause the rains have filled the aquifers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to say? Do you wanna reply to that in any way?
We can reply to the monitoring of the well, so it's obviously a condition of approval for cannabis, that there will be two monitors, the well depth, which is recorded 24 hours a day, and the amount of gallons, so that'll be completely separate for cannabis. There is currently an existing monitor on the well for the vineyard, and that's how we had the data from the previous years.
Thank you for that. Jake, any hands in the Zoom room before I close public comment and bring it back to the commission?
Yes, at this time, we do have one hand raised in the Zoom room. I have Doug Berman, I've given you permission to speak, Doug. Oh, and it looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, my name is Doug Berman.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I... With respect to this project, I would really like to have an understanding of how the lines of the cannabis exclusion zones were drawn, particularly in such close proximity to Hidden Valley Lake, which is the second-largest population center within the county.
I don't mean to interrupt you, is this in regards to this agenda item?
Yes, yes, the weed grow.
No, we're not, we are not on that item yet, that is later on. I believe it's item number four, we are on item number one currently.
All right.
But I will definitely give you an opportunity to speak once we get to that agenda item.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Jake, is that the only hand?
Yes, oh, sorry, no, one just came up. I have another hand from phone 7257. Bart, I've given you permission to speak.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Will you please confirm your first and last name again?
Yes, Bart Levinson. Mary Darby recently did a presentation to the Board of Supervisors detailing the status of her department, so it's then what the current status...
I apologize, I'm not sure if we just have a bad connection, but I definitely could not understand anything you were saying.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
In the most recent Board of Supervisors meeting, Mary Darby made a statement that before she came to the department, her department was not trained in the hydrology report. And so that's on the record in the Board of Supervisors meeting, and I find that statement relevant and concerning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jake, no more hands in the Zoom room?
No, at this time, there are no more hands in the Zoom room.
Thank you. That being said, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. Commissioner Hess or Commissioner Fields? Any comments or questions for the applicant?
No, no, they've been...
Commissioner Chavez?
No questions.
I have a couple of concerns I'd like to just state. First of all, thank you very much, Satya, I know that you've put a lot of effort into this, and so has Mr. Wilson. I know that there was a lot of back and forth, exchange, discussion, and I visited the project recently. One of my big concerns was the proximity to Adobe Creek. There's a berm between the project and the creek that I don't think it's natural, but it does separate the creek from the project. But I do have a little, a few other concerns. The project is located within a flood inundation zone. There is a dam, not very far upstream, I'm not sure how far it is. Another concern is, the general plan states an intent to preserve agricultural lands, and if we put this much cement down, that's not preserving agricultural lands. The effect on other users, uses of the aquifer are both cumulative and individual. I'm also concerned about the VOCs, although I've been reassured this filtration will prevent them from spreading. As I've lived in Lake County and I've observed these greenhouses, we can smell them, they're there, whatever the filtration is, it's not completely eliminating it. I'm concerned about the effect of the dramatically increased traffic on already dilapidated county roads. I'm concerned about the aesthetic impacts, as articulately stated by Hollary Roberson in her letter. I'm concerned about cultural conflicts in the somewhat residential neighborhood. Of course, I'm concerned, as many people have stated...
What does a cultural conflict mean?
It means that somebody who's new to the neighborhood is very offensive and rude to the neighbors. I'm concerned about proximity to crucial hitch spawning area, and most of all, I'm concerned that a lack of a full EIR will result in possible legal consequences for our county. will result in possible legal consequences for our county.
I've heard no comments about this applicant being particularly culturally difficult.
Nothing else to be said? Okay.
Is the dam referred to on the applicant's property?
The dam is, the dam inundation zone is, yes. The dam itself.
No, the dam itself.
No, it is never.
So you're not in any way responsible for its maintenance or?
Correct. We are also, the actual project area is also outside the flood zone. I know that was mentioned too.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavez, any questions or comments for the applicant? You are on mute.
Uh, no questions, but I am prepared to make a motion.
Please.
Let's see here. Uh, I moved that the planning commission find that the negative, mitigated negative declaration IS 20-88, applied for by North Coast Select, Inc. on property located on 1496 Bell Hill Road, Kelseyville, California, further described as APNs 017-002-02. Associated parcels 007-010-24 and 017-002-01 will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore, a negative, a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed on the staff report dated January 13th, 2022.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Field?
May.
Thank you.
I further move that.
Go ahead.
I further move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 20-75, applied for by North Coast Select, Inc. on property located on 1496 Bell Hill Road, Kelseyville, California, further described as APNs 017-002-02. Associated parcel 007-010-24 and 017-002-01 does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Articles 27, Section 13 of the Lake County zoning ordinance. And the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed on the staff report dated January 13th, 2022.
Second?
Roll call, vote?
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Field?
May.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. I'm showing a time of five, or excuse me, 10:21. We are going to take a short five-minute break and come back at 10:27 for item number two. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm showing a time of 10:27. Thank you for your patience. We will go ahead and bring up item number two. This is a public hearing on consideration of a major use permit UP 20-68 and mitigated negative declaration IS 20-83. The project applicant, Christian Hernandez, is applying for a two-acre outdoor canopy area within 170,730 square feet cultivation area to include 12 shipping containers with a total of 4,000 square feet, solar panels and eight outdoor drying, excuse me, drying tents on existing agricultural land located at 2,000 Clover Valley Road in Upper Lake, Lake County, or in Upper Lake, Lake County also known, excuse me, 2,000 Clover Valley Road in Upper Lake, California, in Upper Lake, Lake County, also known as Assessor's Parcel Number APN 004-007-25. Satya, I believe you have our presentation? Okay. Okay, so today's agenda, we're going down the list again for the topics and findings for exotic, exotic farms? Cannabis cultivation project. This is also a continued item from December 16th of last year. I also want to inform you again that the project description and analysis have not changed since then. However, there was a concern for the cumulative effects from the area. Though I did not receive any concrete directives from the commissioner to address this, I did suggest that the applicant provide a comparative analysis of the report since the transition to cannabis through the data obtained from early activation permits, which can be found in attachment seven. The applicant is requesting an approval for a major use permit to cultivate two acres of outdoor cannabis canopy area within an approximately 3.9 acres cultivation area to enclose the canopy area. The applicant initially requested the permit for mixed light cultivation within greenhouse. However, it was, it would conflict with the Lake County zoning ordinance under the scenic combining district. The permit requested meets the criteria of the parcel size and the base zoning under the generally permitted uses, which is explained in greater details in the staff report. The 3.9 acres fence cultivation area will enclose the canopy area and included following ancillary facilities, the 12, 320 square feet shipping container equipped with solar grids, a lock shed for agricultural chemical, six outdoor, 525 square feet drying tent and two packaging tents, compost area and six 5,000 gallons water tank, and one will be used for fire suppressant. The zoning designation for the surrounding areas include agriculture to the north, rural lands and agriculture preserve to the east, agriculture preserve and rural land to the south and rural lands to the west. To the southeast is a recently approved cannabis operation. To the north of the parcel is Clover Creek. However, the project site is located over 500 feet away, and beyond is undeveloped land. There are several outbuildings in the surrounding areas with some agricultural use. The, the project takes place in an existing vineyard, currently 27.4 acres of active producing vineyard, and would take place within the center and of the same footprint of the already developed vineyard. A site visit was conducted on August 6th of 2020 with code enforcement to verify existing conditions and if it meets fire safety standards and zoning. The project had also been approved for early activation, as shown in the photo to the right. The recent site visit was also conducted with Commissioner Fields to understand the typical cannabis operations. Staff, uh, staff reviewed the project for concurrence with the general, with the following listed and determined that it is consistent with the Lake County general plan, Upper Lake Nice area plan, and the zoning ordinance. The proposed project is within agriculture and resource conservation general plan designation. As proposed, the project meets the general plan goal as listed above by actively engaging in crop production and continued operation within the related activities of agricultural purposes. The proposed project would continue to serve its purpose to provide groundwater recharge function by cultivating outdoors by an increase of 0.2% of impervious surfaces for the proposed structure. The project meets this criteria as it is located within approximately over 500 feet away from the project site along Clover Creek. In addition, the proposed project meets the goals as a diverse economic base through the promotion of the agricultural industry. Cannabis cultivation operation is fairly new. However, the project does fit the goals and policy for land use described in the general plan by the promotion of economic development, employment opportunity, and the creation of a sound tax base for the county and potential catalysts for diversifying the economy. The project meets and comply with several objectives and policies within the Upper Lake Nice area plan. The policies and objectives listed in the slide are integrated within the Lake County zoning ordinance and the proposed project. This includes providing a project management plan to detail the proposed irrigation techniques and working cooperatively for conservation measures to protect water resources. The applicant will utilize drip irrigation system to conserve water resources. The project parcel is designated within an area as scenic combining. However, the sighting of the project is located in the center of the parcel outside of the scenic corridors. In addition, it is screened from public views. The applicant will comply with the county's regulation as well as the state regarding hazardous materials. The applicant is required to be set back from the waterway by 100 feet and 150 feet from the California State Water Quality Board by 150 feet. The sighting is located approximately over 500 feet from the nearest water course, Clover Creek. In addition, attachment seven provides details of the scenic vista and water resources, which was the topic of the last meeting and addresses in this attachment. In this slide, staff will demonstrate how each of these section of the zoning ordinance are met. The project is located within the base zoning district agriculture, Article 5. Agriculture is a permitted use for commercial cannabis cultivation under Article 27.1380 when applying and approved for a major use or minor use permit. The site is not located within the farmland protection zone under the number, or ordinance 3101, whereas the location is designated for an area to protect traditional crops from cannabis outdoor cultivation. Therefore, the project location complies with the preservation of agricultural diversity and does not conflict with the amended ordinance. Article 34 protects views of scenic areas on Clover Valley Road. Under this article, there are limitations and restrictions of what types of uses and dimensions of structures are permitted in areas designated as scenic. Greenhouses and agricultural processes, processing are not permitted in scenic combining if designated adjacent to a state highway. However, the use, project site is located in county roads where if located within a scenic combining, it is allowable upon first obtaining a major use permit with an allowable size of 5,000 square feet on each case. The applicant initially applied for the project to propose a two-stage project development into a half acre of cannabis within greenhouses. In order for the applicant to comply with the zoning ordinance of this article, the, the development to construct a greenhouse would need to be removed. The applicant decides to move forward without the use of greenhouse structures and therefore complies with the, the, I mean, with this article. The parcel is designated as a floodway fringe combining district. However, the project site is located outside of the special flood hazard area, and regulations within the article does not apply to project site location and proposal of the project. Article 37 purpose is to preserve, protect, and restore significant riparian system. Under this article, the project is required to have a 30-feet setbacks from the top of the stream bank. However, Article 27 regulation for cannabis further restricts this by 100 feet. And the California State Water Quality Board further restricts this by 150 feet. The applicant complies with the state and local regulation, and the project is set back approximately 500 feet. Additional requirements, such as development standard, general requirements and restriction under Article 27 have also been met and is fully addressed in the staff report. The historic use of the property includes a vineyard and other crop production for at least the past 30 years. A grading permit was issued prior to applying for the use permit for the removal of great vineyard on the site under an exemption of, for agricultural crop conversion. The initial study found that the project would potentially cause significant impact and addresses the following bullets on, on this slide that can be found in attachment five as well as in the staff report. Staff addresses the impact of air quality in this project management plan found in attachment five, which mitigates fugitive dust from construction. Cultural resources and tribal cultural resources was not identified during the survey, however, can occur unexpectedly during any ground disturbances. Mitigation measures are included to ensure that in a case of inadvertent discoveries, these resources are protected. Lastly, construction from the project can result in temporary increase in noise. It is included to limit to certain hours of the day, which can also be found in the staff report and in the condition of approval. Staff found that the project is located 500 feet from the nearest waterway and is not expected to create an adverse impact to water quality with the proposed best practicable treatment and control measures from the state water board incorporated in the projects such as stormwater retention basin, seed install waters. A biological study was conducted by a plant ecologist and determined there were, there are no special status species on site as it was previously disturbed and no remaining natural habitats or other condition that are suitable for any of the regions known rare or endangered plants to occur. The plant incorp, the applicant incorporates water conservation measure and will install a water, install a water meter to keep track of irrigation rates to ensure sustainable water use. And, I mean, water use is achieved and maintained. Conservation measures include the use of drip line irrigation, the application of mulch to reduce water evaporation, use of soil amendment that result, I mean, that reduced salt buildup to prevent the need for flushing salts by overwatering, adjusting water rates based on weather conditions, use of drought tolerant fragrant plants, and regular inspection of irrigation system to detect potential leaks. Lastly, the project management plan incorporates best management practices found in attachment two to address major concerns, which minimize the potential impact and the need for additional mitigation measure as stated in the staff report. The review authority can only approve and conditionally approve a major use permit if the following findings listed on the slide are made. The project scope complies with the minimum regulatory requirement set by the local ordinance to address the general welfare of the public through private screening, security measures, background checks, clear violation from code enforcement and setbacks. The project meets the size, sighting, and location to accommodate the proposed canopy size and project scope. The road can accommodate for the use and private, provide adequate private and public service by complying with the Public Resource Code 4290 road standards. The project does conform with the provision and policies of the Lake County Code, general plan and approved zoning that had been addressed within the staff report. There are no known violations of the following chapters listed in the staff report and complies with all additional findings of the use permit. The applicant meets all the qualification of the permit under Article 27 as previously stated. Staff recommends that the planning commission takes the following action to adopt the mitigated negative declaration IS 20-83 for a major use permit UP 20-68 with the following findings found in attachment six. As a note for the record, again, staff is aware that the initial study, project description for the proposed greenhouse is no longer a consideration due to the current zoning for scenic combining to not allow initial, the initial proposed greenhouse structure. However, the initial study did analyze the full scope of the two stages. Under 15073.5 recirculation of the negative declaration, staff is required to recirculate a mitigated, I mean, a negative declaration. when the document is substantially revised. However, staff determined that this does not fall under the criteria as substantial revision as a piece of element is removed from the project due to noncompliance with the local ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and does not consider it to be a substantial revision to the negative declaration. Staff also recommends the approval of the major use permit, UP 20-68, for the following findings of the previous slide. I conclude the presentation.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from the commissioners for staff or the applicant? Is the applicant? Okay. I just wanted to see if you guys were here. Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners before we open it up to public comment?
Sure, I had a question.
Go ahead.
So on the, on the plan, it says something about, where's my question here? Drying tents, what material is going to be used for those? And are they going to be like temporary or are they going to be?
Like permanent structures?
Yeah, permanent structures.
Sure, if staff would like to clarify or the applicant? Good morning. Please be sure to state your first and last name.
Jean-Luc Shaw, sorry, a little loud, Jean-Luc Shaw. Good morning, Commissioners, Satur, thank you. Yeah, the drying, Commissioner Chavez as well. The tents are like, they're similar to event tents you might see. So they're a permanent structure in post and pier in the ground, that's what's proposed. I believe their height is roughly eight to 10 feet. So metal structure, white polypropylene cover, and permanent, permanent in the ground. It's important to note that a part of the comparative analysis that we prepared shows actual diagrams of what you would see from the street. It's very little and the applicant proposes to, to plant trees in a few spots that it would be visible, quick growing trees to block any view above the fence.
I found that comparative analysis to be very helpful in putting things in perspective. Are these tents enclosed although they may be out of cloth or polypropylene?
Yes, again, they're a lot like event tents you'd see at a wedding.
But not open to the wind, to the breezes, they're?
Like fully enclosed?
They zip shut, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I too found that comparative analysis very useful. There was a lot of work put into that and I really appreciate it.
Oh, good, thank you. Any other questions or?
If the commissioners have any questions or comments before we open it up to the public?
I just have a couple of comments. I visited the site and I was very impressed with what appears to be a genuine attempt to do everything right. Few notes, but I didn't have any large concerns. I think the pump motor, I think we talked about it, was propane, not electric. I don't think that's really relevant. Growing cannabis is not an actual agricultural activity as I understand it, what the ag commissioner told me, but I keep hearing this reference as though we're agriculture. Does this have any meaning? I mean, does this, is this relevant to this discussion? Satur and Nicole?
I'm not sure.
Nicole, could you opine?
I think Satur knows.
It's just that I have my own personal.
Yeah, the instinct is.
The, I think the backstory on this is that because it isn't recognized yet by the state as an agricultural crop, it, it became under our jurisdiction and the planning commission with input, of course, from gazillion people wrote the cannabis ordinance. But that's the distinction, I think, that the outgoing ag commissioner made between, they both grew out of the ground, but since it isn't technically recognized as an ag product yet, we, we regulate that. It's the only thing that goes in the ground that we regulate.
Okay, okay, I'm getting the picture.
Please, please contribute, Nicole.
There are, I can give a more detailed analysis if you would like at another, at the next meeting or another meeting in the future. But in a nutshell, it largely is determined based on a collection of laws that impact cannabis. There are federal laws that define certain kinds of plants and uses and products. And then there are state laws that define certain plants, uses, and products. And there are rights and responsibilities that attach to those uses. So for agricultural, there may be certain kinds of rights that attach to agriculture that cannabis is not, that the state did not, did not grant to cannabis. So cannabis is defined in a narrow way in the legal structure as opposed to other agricultural products which are, or agriculture, excuse me, agriculture and agricultural products which are defined broader. I can give a, I can actually give a more detailed sort of breakdown of the distinction.
I think that I would love to hear that at another time. I don't think it's particularly relevant to this item.
Right, I can't actually speak to the relevance of it here. You would have to ask staff because that analysis for individual, as it applies to individual, individual uses and permit applications would have been performed by staff.
I think it's just my noticing the terminology. I don't think that she's treating it as agricultural activities, so I think we're fine. But sometime down the road, I'd like to address that issue, especially as it pertains to the right to farm ordinance in Lake County. But moving on, I just wanted to say I really appreciated the cumulative review by the hydrologist. I was really impressed with that and it gave me a much better understanding of the water situation in your area. I just have one question for Christian and that is, I noticed that there was a lot of cheese weed on site and I'm wondering how you plan to control that or if you do. It's just a weed that is pervasive in Lake County. It's not really that important. I'm just curious.
Hi, so my name's Christian Hernandez. Thank you all for being here, Satur, mainly for going out to the property. But yeah, so just like weed whacking or, you know, mowing or.
Okay, physical.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Any more questions?
I have none.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we are officially opening public comment. If anyone in chambers would like to speak on this item or if there are any hands raised in the Zoom room, Jake?
At this time, we do have two hands raised in the Zoom room. Do you want to start with those?
Yeah, we can start with those since I have no one in chambers at this time.
All right.
Thank you.
Looks like the first speaker, Erin, I've given you permission to speak and it seems you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, hello, Erin McCarrick in Clearlake. And I'm also with the Lake County Cannabis Alliance and want to voice my support for this project. Thank you, Commissioners, thank you Chair. As the Commissioners noted, this is a project that is doing, doing it right, getting the permits, respecting the neighborhood, ensuring the scenic corridor. So I just want to voice my support for that and also cohabitating crops. I'll avoid the use of the word agriculture because yes, it is a confusing definitive word because there are certain definitions at the state level that actually do describe it as agriculture. And, you know, we have, Lake County is determining how to define cannabis as well. And the Lake County Cannabis Alliance is doing a presentation to the board next Tuesday and I'll reach out to the Commissioners here and we can do a presentation with you guys as well because, yeah, it's a complicated industry. But in summary, I want to definitely support my, voice my support for this project. And thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Jake, do you still have that second hand that would like to speak?
Yes, sorry, the next hand we have raised is from Shauna Steen. Shauna, give me permission to speak. It looks like you're muted. Please confirm your first and last name.
Yes, my name is Shauna Steen. I live in Lake County near the farm. Over the past five years, I have seen many illegal cannabis farms all around the county. These illegal farms do a lot of damage to the land and cause all sorts of problems for the residents without giving anything back to the county. With that said, getting a cannabis farm license is a long and expensive process. And if these guys have done everything right as far as licenses go, licensing goes, pay their taxes and have cooperated with the state and county, then I think they should be rewarded with the license that they have spent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, and we have this time one more hand raised from K R. I give you permission to speak. It looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yeah, my name is Karen Riley. I just wanted to speak out in support of this project as well. I know these guys and I know how hard they worked to get this project off the ground and just kind of speak about the comedy at the cannabis industry in general. It's recently, the market's taken like a huge turn. The price of cannabis flower has dropped dramatically over the past year and a lot of legal cultivators are no longer to be able to operate in the upcoming season. So that represents like a lot of money and time and effort and blood and sweat and tears kind of going down the drain. So I think it's really important to, to allow the people who can keep going to do that because if we don't, we're not going to have an industry much longer. The black market is just going to take over because right now the black market's over 70% of the cannabis market in California. So projects like this are, they should be kind of like the, the standard for the kind of farms that should be allowed to get a major use permit. That's all.
If I can ask a question of the, of the Zoom speaker. 70% of the black market, where do you get this number? I'm very curious.
That's just the, the number that, of the various studies that have been done over the past year. I think the last time I heard that was from Governor Newsom, which was about a year ago when they were considering reforms to Prop 64. But I mean, that's a widely available statistic. The black market is definitely over two-thirds of the cannabis market in California. And that's part of the reason why the market has tanked because there's so much, there's so much, you know, illegal flower being grown. It's being grown using really terrible pesticides and it's being grown as cheaply as possible and sold out of state. So basically, the resources are being drained from the state and then the money is going to parties outside of the state. And that's why the cannabis industry is in the state that it's in. You know, people are losing their homes that they've lived on for 20 years because, because, you know, they had a dream to grow cannabis on it and they did everything right. And now because of the state of the market, they, they have to lose everything.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. If you could send me some links to the data, I'd love that. Thank you.
Jake, any hands in the Zoom room?
Yes, we have another hand up. It just dropped, sorry. We have no more hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, we're going to bring it back to chambers. We do have a comment. Please be sure to state your first and last name and there is a little green sheet if you could fill out for us, please. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Colleen Perkins. I'm one of the attorneys who kind of oversaw this project at our office. We work on a lot of cannabis projects and I think this one has been our favorite. Christian has been a joy to work with. He's been amenable to all the changes to the project that the regulations have required. As the former speaker mentioned, the market has tanked, especially the outdoor market. And so I think that just goes to show how amenable Christian is to compliance with the regulations, the fact that he has now dropped the more financially beneficial part of the project, which was the greenhouses. So I know that was a hit for him, but he's kept through and remains steadfast in making this an exemplary project that is both environmentally and ecologically conscious and economically beneficial to Lake County. So I want to thank Satur for all her hard work over the past more than 18 months that we've been working on this. And thank you all of you commissioners for taking the time and consideration to meaningfully evaluate this project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any, nobody else wishes to speak in chambers? Jake, one last time in the Zoom room before I close public comment?
We did have a hand kind of jumping up and down. I do see a hand from Sharon here. Sharon, I give you permission to speak? It looks like you're unmuted. I do know we had an issue before. Can you give me your first and last name? I think they might still be having issues with their audio. She did send me a comment via Zoom chat. I could just relay that?
If you please, if you could please, Jake?
Yes, of course. So this says, my name is Sharon Geimer. We have land near this address and we support this. I know there is a drought, but we have never been low on water back in this valley. And that is the statement.
Thank you. If that is the last hand in the Zoom room and no one else wishes to speak here in chambers, I will officially close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion, action.
I have no comments. I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
I move that the planning commission find on the basis of the initial study, number 2083 prepared by the planning division and the mitigation measures, which have been added to the project, that the use permit as applied for by Christian Hernandez Rodriguez will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore mitigated negative declarations shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated February 24, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 20-68, applied for by Christian Hernandez Rodriguez, project on the property located at 2,000 Clover Valley Road, Upper Lake, California, does meet the requirements of Section 5.1.4 and Article 27, Section 13ATIIIGIII of the Lake County zoning ordinance that the planning commission has reviewed and considered the mitigated negative declaration that was adopted for this project, sorry, I'm an editor, and that a major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated February 24, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that, that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission and appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Moving right along to our agenda item number three. This is a public hearing on consideration of major use permit UP 21-42 and a mitigated negative declaration IS 21-44. The applicant Leonode Incorporated is proposing three Type A, three medium outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation licenses and one A Type 13 self-distribution license to allow legal transport of cannabis to and from the site. The project location is 6680 Wilkinson Road, the cultivation site, and 6690 Wilkinson Road, Kelseyville, California, and further described as APN 007-018-14 and APN 007-018-15. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning, Commissioners. Eric Porter, Associate Planner, Lake County. The item we have before you is. The item we have before you is, uh, as Chair Price said, um, major use permit for commercial cannabis cultivation, uh, located off Wilkinson Road. If I can get this thing to work.
I think it's backwards. There you go.
Yeah, good old eagle eye here. All right, so during this hearing, we're going to talk about the permit requests, the project scope, project analysis, SEQA analysis and recommendation. And, um, I'm going to have to take this down or I'm going to start sneezing. Couple of housekeeping items. Uh, page one, under attachments six and seven, there are actually corrections needed. Uh, at the time I wrote this, the most current version of the water analysis was dated November ninth. They've since, uh, updated it and the most current is actually January twenty-seventh of this year. Um, there's nothing consequential in the update that would affect the project or the analysis. Uh, item seven, it talks about no public comments. We actually did receive a public comment on the last day of the SEQA comment period, which ended February tenth. Uh, email was submitted by a group that I'd never heard of called the Kelseyville Community Coalition. And that should be of record. Uh, you received it electronically yesterday by Director Darby.
Yes.
And so all of you should have that letter. I believe it's six pages long and they questioned five aspects of the, uh, initial study and the project scope. Um, and I'd be happy to address those points if requested by the planning commission. Second item that needs to be updated is on page three and I can't remember what it is now.
Water analysis?
Could be. Yeah, date of the water analysis on page three should be, uh, actually January twenty-seventh of this year. And then finally, on page fourteen at the bottom, it again refers to public comments. At the time the staff report was written, I had not received that letter from, uh, this coalition, uh, that had come in on February tenth. And I, I probably need to note that when I received that email on February tenth, it actually looked like spam. And the way it was set up, I was afraid to open the attachment because it frankly looked like it was not legitimate. Um, they resent that email two days ago, um, which is how we were able to ascertain it's a, a legitimate comment from the public. Although again, I have no idea who's involved with this group, uh, calling themselves the Kelseyville Community Coalition. So-
Well, Eric, as someone who's, uh, email was hacked last week, I appreciate your caution.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hess. I sympathize with you. Um, all right, so as, uh, Chair Price indicated, the permit is a major use permit consisting of three A-type-three medium outdoor licenses. Before I get into this, I, I do want to note that this is one of the most comprehensive packages, uh, well-planned, well-thought-out submittals that I've ever seen out of the eighty-plus that I've processed. So I will, I just want to, uh, commend the applicant Linda Bryant on her diligence and putting this together. Um, anyway, getting back to the proposal, um, she's also requested an A-type-thirteen self-distribution license. Cultivation area is just over two-hundred-and-ten-thousand square feet. Uh, actual canopy area is less. It's a hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-six square feet. Uh, taxable area is actually the cultivation area. So that's the part that the, um, taxation annually would be based on. Uh, site's located at sixty-six-eighty and ninety Wilkinson Road in Kelseyville. APNs are noted. Property size, about sixty-six and a third acres. Zoning is RL B-five, which means they can't divide it below five acres, although RL, they couldn't divide it below forty or more acres anyway. Uh, and seen it combining. So the applicant's proposing twelve shipping containers that are eight by forty, uh, three-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot storage sheds. It is in a high-fire area. Uh, and they are proposing water storage tanks for irrigation and fire suppression. I'm not sure how to get rid of that bar right there.
Click and drag, maybe? There you go.
Okay. Um, all right, these are the two, um, lots that are affected by this proposal. The actual cultivation lot is this lot here and the one to the east of it is the co-location lot. Uh, Wilkinson Road, you can see it up here. It terminates into a driveway leading onto the subject site. It's a shared driveway leading to the, um, public part of the Wilkinson Road. It's a snapshot of the cultivation area. So we evaluated this like we do all major and minor use permits against the general plan, the applicable area plan and the applicable portions of the zoning ordinance. Um, we found no conflicts with the general plan. We found no conflicts with the Kelseyville area plan. And I'll get into the, uh, compliance with the zoning ordinance momentarily. As with any, uh, major use permit, we have to meet findings that are found in article fifty-one point four, major use permit findings for approval. Indicated we had received no adverse comments to date. Obviously, this was prepared before the Kelseyville letter came in. Uh, getting back to the actual findings for approval. Finding one, the use is not detrimental to the health, safety, morals, welfare, comfort, and general welfare of the neighborhood. Number two, that the site is adequate in size, shape, location, and physical characteristics to accommodate the type of use and level of development proposed. Number three, streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate to safely accommodate the proposed use. Four, that there are no, uh, I'm sorry, that there are adequate public or private services, including but not limited to fire protection, water supply, sewage disposal, police protection to serve the project. Number five, that the project is in conformance with the applicable provisions and policies of the code, general plan, and any approved zoning or land use plan. And number six, that no violations of chapters five, seventeen, twenty-one, twenty-three, or twenty-six of the Lake County Code currently exist on the site. So we were able to make those six findings. The other three findings are found in article twenty-seven, uh, subsection A T. And they include that the use complies with the development standards of article twenty-seven. Um, I indicated with the exception of the water situation, that's not applicable. That may be a cut and paste. Oops on my part. Uh, the water analysis actually shows that, um, there's adequate water supply, not just for this project, but for the neighboring users of the shared aquifer. Number two, the applicant is qualified to make the application. The applicant, in this case, has passed live scan and there are no conflicts with this person, uh, making this application. Number three, the application complies with qualifications for a permit found in article twenty-seven, again, another cut and paste. My apologies. Uh, the water analysis is thorough and comprehensive and it disputes that part of item number three. Um, we found potential impacts when doing the SEQA analysis pertaining to air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal resources, uh, geology and soils primarily with, um, prehistoric inadvertent finds. And there was nothing in the cultural study that would indicate that there likely is any prehistoric, uh, or, um, historic, cultural, or tribal resources on that property. Uh, noise could be a factor during site, uh, development, although honestly, there's not a lot of site development needed for this project other than a concrete pad that would support the twelve shipping containers. And finally, mandatory findings of significance. Um, I do want to add for air quality, one of the findings that have to be made in SEQA is pertaining to odor. And, um, one of the conditions of approval would require planting fragrant plants around certain areas, uh, of the outdoor cultivation that would have to be maintained in a healthy state for the life of the project. They would have to be irrigated and they would have to be planted prior to cultivation beginning. So the recommendation-
Excuse me, Eric. Was this the project that also, um, would consider if need be this, this Cannabusters technology or whatever, the? And we've talked about odor so many times, I'd never heard of that technology before that-
I, I'm not familiar with it.
Okay. Sorry, I, I read that somewhere in one of our staff reports.
Cannabusters?
Yeah, I did too.
Did I get the wrong project for that? The applicant is there? Okay, anyway, it sounded like a very interesting alternative, which we'd never considered before. Excuse my interruption.
Well, no, that's a really good point because we're getting a lot of, uh, outdoor cultivations and honestly, I don't know if there's a hundred percent foolproof way of mitigating odors with an outdoor cultivation.
Apparently, I don't want to digress, but apparently it, it degrades the terpenes and breaks them up into inert, not, not odor, odoriferous substances.
Thanks for telling me. I'll be happy to look into it.
Never heard of it before.
I hadn't either. Um, okay, getting back to the recommendations. Uh, environmental recommendation is that, uh, staff's recommending the planning commission adopt mitigated negative declaration twenty-one dash forty-four and approve use permit number UP twenty-one dash forty-two with conditions. And I'll be happy to take any questions that the commissioners might have.
I agree with you, Eric, that this was a, a very thorough application and checked all the boxes very well.
Very straightforward. Um, Commissioner Fields or Commissioner Chavez, any questions for staff before we open it up for public comment?
No questions at the moment.
I just want to talk about water at some point.
Uh, in regards to this project?
Yes.
Um, go ahead right now, that's fine.
Okay, I'm wondering if the applicant is present, maybe she can tell us what the spacing is going to be on these plants. How many plants you plan to have over the three acres?
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Linda Bryant and I am the sole owner of Leonode Inc. Is the correct pronunciation.
Thank you.
Um, we are looking at approximately a thousand plants and so it will be spaced. Um, you know, we're, we're planning that now. We wanted to reserve the entire area that was afforded to us. We may actually plant only two acres, maybe less, depending on how it produces or how it plans out. But at this point, we're looking at about a thousand plants.
Okay, so what I've been seeing on these projects is there's, um, a flawed process that's being used to evaluate how much water is being consumed. And a lot of, I think it's the C D F A that's suggesting that five-hundred plants per acre is normal. That's at a spacing of eight by eleven feet. And most of the projects I've been seeing are four by four or five by five, which is almost triple the number of plants. And the, it, the consumption of six gallons per day, which is what we're using perhaps erroneously because we have a different, um, evapotranspiration rate here in Lake County. It's much more arid. So a thousand plants, I think, is probably doable with this amount of water. But the seventeen-hundred and acre times three, it concerns me. So that's, that's all. If you're only doing a thousand plants, that's, I think you have enough water for that.
Commissioners, if I may?
Yes.
Just to clarify, uh, the pro- the analysis is performed for the project you will be approving. If you are being asked to approve a larger quantity of plants, the fact that an applicant may voluntarily choose to limit that themselves later is not the, um, is somewhat irrelevant to the analysis. Your analysis is for what is being approved because that will, what, that is what will be allowed under the permit. So whatever maximum use would be necessary for the proposed project would be the amount that you would need to determine is available on site for the project.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to say, Commissioner Fields, to, in regards to that?
No.
No? Anyone in chambers wish to, or I'm going to go ahead and pu- open up public comment. If anyone in here would like to speak, um, in regards to this agenda item, please feel free to do so. Um, Jake, is there any hands in the Zoom room?
Uh, at this time, there are no hands in the Zoom room.
Okay. We'll give it just a minute in case somebody wants to chime in. I think that might be it, so we can, um, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission looking for action or discussion.
I'm prepared to offer a motion.
Um, I just wanted to make, um, I'm not, I'm a little bit unsure. I'd like to ask Nicole's advice on this. Um, we talked about the comment from Kelseyville Community Coalition. Um, I was very curious who this entity was. So I responded to the email and I got a rather lengthy response about who it is. And I think it's relevant, but it might be considered a private communication? I'm not quite sure. I'm wondering if Nicole can advise me on this.
Anything that is shared with the planning commission? I'm sorry, Commissioner. I, it was a bit, bit of delivery. Uh, were you finished? I didn't want to interrupt.
No, I just, I, you know, from my journalism, um, experience, I know that if somebody publishes something, that is constituted by, uh, sharing it with one other person. So I feel it is published. What do you think?
So, as this, as a decision-making body and members of a dispe- decision-making body in relation to the work you do with the commission, communication shared with you are a matter of public record. So if the, if staff sends you things for the agenda or for the planning commission hearings, that would be a matter of public record whether or not, um, they actually, whether or not it's shared at the meeting. Um, so when the public communicates with you, your communications are public.
Okay.
So you could read the email and if it is informing your decision here, you should read your, read the email.
Yes, I remember you telling me that earlier and I do feel like it would be, um, appropriate for me to share the email. Um, if it's okay, I would like to just read it.
Sure.
Um, my question to the applicant was, um-
To the applicant or to-
I'm sorry, to the, um, thank you.
Sure.
To the, um, the person who made the comment. Um, "Thank you for your input regarding tomorrow's permit application. Can you please fill me in on who wrote this letter, your organization's constituency and goals?" Thank you. And the response I received was, "Greetings. Thank you for the message. Our group, comma, the Kelseyville Community Coalition prefers to remain anonymous due to the nature of the cannabis industry and the protection of our family. We are unaware of who is involved with this project or in other words, whether or not the applicant has solicited nefarious characters for financing, management, et cetera. For the health and safety of our families, we prefer to remain anonymous. We represent the community of Kelseyville and the neighborhoods surrounding the project. Our goals are to bring awareness to the density of cannabis projects throughout the county, the need to respect our precious water sources during times of drought and further into the future, to hopefully have our voices heard so that we do not got, get drowned out by all the noise and to bring awareness to farms that do not seem to represent responsible farming practices. This particular farm seems to believe in over-fertilization and has the potential to add nauseous chemicals into our watershed. The chemicals listed on the management documents are synthetic fertilizers that will contribute to the algal blooms already present in our creeks, rivers, and lakes. Although they claim to use less fertilizers than what is allowed by the C D F A, we believe this is a form of smoke and mirrors and these claims will never be held true. Regardless of the amounts actually used, they will have runoff into our watershed and that will add to the algal blooms. For that reason, we hope your decision on this project will help bring awareness to all future projects that do not, that do not seem to respect our watersheds and bring awareness to farms that do not respect our precious resources in this beautiful state and amazing county. Thank you very much for your time. Best regards, Kelseyville Community Coalition."
Thank you for, um, reading that into the record. Any, any comments or concerns about that? Anybody want to chime in on it?
Um, I do not have any concerns. Uh, it seems like everything was addressed really well. My biggest concern is its incompat- incompatibility with the neighborhood. It's about a half mile, as I understand it, from a residential subdivision. And I'm a little bit familiar with the air movement and I, I think that an outdoor grow in this area is probably going to be pretty offensive to a lot of people down there. That's my only concern at this point.
Sure, if, uh, if the, if you'd like to approach and give us a little bit of info?
Linda Bryant. Thank you for your concerns. One, I would like to make a comment first, thank you to Eric and the CDD staff. I did choose early on to be my own, or to work without a consultant and they have been very kind and generous with their time for helping me with an inordinate amount of questions. So I just wanted to give them a toot there. I, first off, do not have nefarious sources of income. It's been a long time coming of building up everything I have. So I am somewhat self-supported, I did have a friend who is not also nefarious, who has helped me. On my property, it is, I have a sandy loam type soil, which is very porous. And there are no creeks or water sources around or near my property. So the concern of it affecting watersheds in the nearby, in the near area is not pertinent on my property. The fertilizers, I am working with someone who is guiding me on regenerative organics in planting and using materials that are the least impactful in a negative way to the surrounding area. This project is about as isolated as you can get as far as nearby residences. Yes, we do drive by the perimeter of the subdivision, but the subdivision cannot see nor hear nor actually be aware of my project in particular. I can't speak to the surrounding area, but mine is extremely isolated. I also did some research about the wind direction and it is about 78% coming either from the west blowing east or from the north blowing south, which is not in the direction of any subdivision or any other of the developed areas of Kelseyville. Respect the community, oh, that's a hard one. I, I consider myself like a librarian type, I am a math teacher, a realtor. I couldn't possibly describe how passionate I am about following rules. That is unfortunate characterization of who I might be. I will respect the community wholeheartedly.
Well, I'm, if I can just jump in here, I'm not making any judgments about your character, I'm just worried about.
No, they did, so I was addressing that.
Okay.
If there is anything else?
Just quick question, what's your elevation there, do you know?
Oh, boy.
Probably on one of the.
I know I am on the beginning edge of Mount Canuckdye, so I am up high. But the topography is heading to the south, not the north, so I'm kind of at an incline.
Oh, okay, well, that's my concern because I know that the, at night, when things cool, they go down slope.
But I'm sloping down to the south.
So, yeah, and the predominant winds, I, you know, I'm not a close neighbor, but I'm very familiar with the general. So I'm, that alleviates my concern, thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. So with public comm, go ahead, I thought, sorry, Commissioner Hess, I thought you were saying something. So public comment is closed, we are at a point of discussion or motions.
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to offer a motion.
Please.
I move that the planning commission find the initial study IS 21-44 applied for by Linoti Inc., Linda Bryant, on property located at 6680 and 6690 Wilkinson Road, Kelseyville, and further described as APNs 007-018-15 and 007-018-14 will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated February 24, 2022 and as amended here today.
I second.
Been moved and seconded, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
I further move that the planning commission find that the use permit UP 21-42, now should that be 44 or 42? Oh, excuse me, that's UP, UP 21-42, applied for by Linoti Inc., Linda Bryant, on property located at 6680 and 6690 Wilkinson Road, Kelseyville, and further described as APNs 007-018-15 and 007-01814 does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 of the Lake County zoning ordinance and the major use permit be granted, subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated February 24, 2022 and as amended here today.
I second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please, Trish.
Sure, Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Thank you. Absolutely, we are getting ready to jump into our last item. But before we do so, I am seeing a time of 11:30. Let's meet back here. Five minutes, we'll say a five-minute reprieve, a little break and come back at 11:30. Thank you. Okay, I'm showing a time of 11:35, we'll go ahead and get everything in order here. Thank you, everyone, for your patience, we are going to go ahead and get on to our fourth and final agenda item. This is a public hearing on consideration of major use permit UP 20-22 and a mitigated negative declaration IS 20-25. The applicant Zarina Okachova/WeGrow LLC proposes 15 type A or A-type 3B mixed light commercial cannabis cultivation licenses and one A-type 13 self-distribution license. Proposed are 32 90-foot by 125-foot greenhouses, two 90-by-125-foot greenhouses for immature plant starts, four 50-by-100 drying buildings, one 200-square-foot shed, 20 5,000-gallon water tanks, one six-foot-tall galvanized woven wire fence covered with privacy mesh to screen the greenhouses from public view. Total proposed cultivation area is 387,600 square feet, roughly nine acres. Total proposed canopy area is 330,000 square feet. The applicant is also proposing the removal of 130 blue oak trees. The project is located at 16750 Harrington Road, Middletown, California, which is the cultivation site, and 17610 Sandy Road, Middletown, and 19678 Stinson Road, Middletown, California, and further described as APNs 013-060-40, and 013-014-11. They are all clustering sites. And I do believe Eric has prepared our presentation.
I have, Eric Porter, Associate Planner, Lake County. Couple of things before I start, first of all, Michael McGinnis is our new principal planner and we're really pleased to have him, he is extremely well credentialed. And with Mary Darby taking several days off, Michael will be the go-to guy in her department. The other thing is, the other thing is that one of our planners, Saturham, has taken another job and she will be, I believe her last day is either today or tomorrow. So that's a big loss for our department. So anyway, having said that, this item came before the planning commission back in the year 2021. The original application came in, I believe, in summer of 2020. Applied for EA, however, it was so late in the growing season that they opted not to pursue EA. However, they are pursuing the use permit. So the planning commission had approved use permit UP 20-22 on April 22 of 2021. An appeal immediately followed, there were over 100 people that were area residents that were objecting to this license and that still remain extremely opposed to it. This went before the board of supervisors, I believe, in the summer of 2021. The board realized that there was a procedural error that was material and they denied the permit without prejudice. The applicant then immediately reapplied for the permit. We put it through yet another SEQA evaluation and realized that the loss of 130 mature blue oak trees rose to the level of significance warranting an EIR, which was not done. And that affected our recommendation. So getting on to the dynamics of this permit, the resubmital, our recommendation is for denial and I'll go into the reasons for that in a minute. So during this meeting, we'll talk about the permit request, the background, which I've already touched on, the site plan, water analysis, power analysis, tree removal and replacement plan, project analysis, the SEQA analysis, public comments, and finally, the recommendations. So the property is about 237 acres, if I remember correctly. It is capable of supporting the amount of cultivation area that they're requesting. In fact, they're proposing the maximum allowed based on the total combined acreage size. I'm sorry, I got that number wrong, it's 309 acres. Property is owned rural lands, rural residential and waterway. In the general plan, it's rural lands, resource conservation and rural residential. They would employ up to 20 people and I indicated already that 130 blue oak trees would be removed. The site actually has three addresses, but the one at 16750 Harrington is the cultivation site and that's how it's referred to throughout the staff report. Covered all of those items. So here's the zoning map, the cultivation site is located on the uppermost property closest to Harrington Road. Hidden Valley Lakes boundary is the yellow to the west of the cultivation site and it's over 1,000 feet from any kind of a mapped urban growth boundary. So the cultivation site itself is beyond any kind of exclusion area. The blue here is a developed park and there's a 1,000-foot separation requirement between the cultivation area and the edge of the blue area as a public park. It's well beyond that, I believe it's over 2,000 feet from that park. So the separation issues wouldn't apply to this proposed cultivation site. Talked about the background, it was originally submitted in March 5 of 2020. I mentioned the April 22, 2021 hearing date, the appeal occurred in June 8, 2021 before the board. The appeal was upheld, the project was denied by the board and it was resubmitted on August 16, 2021. The applicants were asked to provide a number of different things that were germane to the project, primarily comprehensive water analysis per ordinance 3106, a power analysis based on the original request for 4,000 amps on a system that couldn't withstand additional increases in power drain. The grid is maxed out in this location. So the applicant had a professional electrical engineer prepare a power analysis that indicated that they could get by essentially with the existing 200 amp service that is serving the property currently. The reason for that has to do with the method of cultivation, which is light deprivation. And although it could use additional power, it doesn't have to. And so that was the basis of the power analysis. Essentially, they're not increasing their power demand to the point where they would require additional amperage. The biggest issue that staff had has to do with the tree removal. They did provide a tree removal and replacement plan. However, it doesn't address all of the potential impacts that are associated. So the site plan, the 36 greenhouses would be in this area down here that's identified on this slide. 32, I'm sorry, 34 greenhouses, 32 would be for mature plants and two would be for immature plants. They're proposing four 5,000-square-foot buildings, it would be drying buildings, two 200-square-foot sheds and 20 5,000-gallon water tanks. Water analysis, Hervitz Environmental Services provided the water analysis dated August 10. I think that was 2021, I can't read the number, there's pop-up in the way. It included well data, projected annual usage of 4,713,000 gallons, which is roughly 14.56 acre-feet per year. It evaluated the aquifer capacity, which is evaluated at 911 feet. It also evaluated the draw from neighboring wells and if I remember right, there were no neighboring wells within the scope of area that would otherwise tap into that aquifer. It evaluated pre-drought and post-drought recharges. Pre-drought or non-drought, I should say, represents an estimated 15% of the annual rainfall, whereas in a drought year, it would drop to about half that much. About 8% of the annual rainfall, which of course would be less. The conclusion reached within the Hervitz study is that there is a surplus during drought years of, represents about six acre-feet, 1,628,000 gallons and that includes other wells using the same aquifer. Power, power analysis was provided by DTN Engineering dated January 6, 2022. I indicated it's served by an existing 200 amp service. The analysis evaluated power for one processing building and they're proposing for, oh, three drying buildings, okay, so they covered all four. 34 greenhouses, demand for one processing building is 122 amps. Demand for three drying buildings is 106 amps. And demand for the 40, or the 34 greenhouses, they estimated it zero amps and it would be using natural daylight only. Total demand was for 228 amps, however, only 80% load is assumed. Therefore, the projected demand would be under the 200 amps that presently serve that site. The conclusion reached by this electrical engineer was that the existing 200 amp service is adequate. Tree plant.
Eric, could you go back to that, the power? Just trying to understand these numbers. So all of that can be done with 200 amps or less, what you just described there. But I thought the point of the greenhouses was that they would be enclosed to the point that it would prevent odors from affecting the neighborhood as much. Does the natural light mean that the greenhouses would be open and therefore more potentially able to spread odors?
No.
So how does the natural light reach the greenhouses if they're enclosed?
I think it means that less power would be needed because there's no lighting. I could be wrong here, I'm just guessing.
Sufjan, could you?
Yeah, would you like me to respond?
Yeah.
So the greenhouses are fully enclosed, there are glass structures on the top and so without the additional lighting. There are glass structures on the top, and so without the additional lighting, it can fully penetrate into the greenhouse. So no, it is still fully enclosed. Or the removal of the additional lighting allows the top of the greenhouses to be completely translucent. So they can still control light deprivation via blackout tarps, but there will be no additional lighting. That's what we agreed to, and fully enclosed still.
Okay, moving on. The tree plan is prepared by Emerald Triangle Associates. It's undated. Article twenty-seven, under prohibitive uses, indicates that it discourages tree removal, but does not prohibit tree removal. So there's some interpretation required for this subsection of Article twenty-seven point one-one AT. The tree removal and replacement plan describes four locations on site that are suitable for tree replacement. Applicant is proposing replacement with indigenous trees, presumably oak species, at a three-to-one replacement ratio. The trees, if this project is approved, must be guaranteed for the life of the project. Any trees that die would have to be replaced. Audubon Society, Coastal Oak Society, and the Middletown Area Town Hall have objected to this project specifically due to the tree removal, although each of these agencies raised other concerns. Analysis, we have to look at the Lake County General Plan for Compliance, the Middletown Area Plan, several portions of the zoning ordinance, and then we have to look at any applicable state regulations. So as is the case with any major use permit, six findings have to be made, and three additional findings have to be made per Article twenty-seven point eleven AT. Article fifty-one point four identifies the six requirements for approval, the findings for approval that we have to make, that the use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the neighborhood, the site is adequate in size, shape, location, and physical characteristics to accommodate the type of use and level of development proposed, and that streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate to accommodate the specific proposed use. Number four, that there are adequate public or private services. Number five, that the site is in conformance with the applicable portions of the general plan, specific area plan, in this case, it's a Middletown area plan, and the applicable portions of the Lake County zoning ordinance. And finally, that no violations of Chapters five, seventeen, twenty-one, twenty-three, or twenty-six of the Lake County Code currently exists on the property. Going to item six, of note is when the project started, there were illegal equipment discovered on the site. I did some extensive inquiries about whether that would affect the applicant's ability to even apply for a use permit, or if it would affect the planning commission's ability to approve a use permit. Certain violations can be cured through a major use permit process. In this case, I was told by the former director that there was no conflict with the stolen equipment, which is still an open case with the Highway Patrol, just for the record. Applicants claiming that the equipment was left on site when they had purchased the property in two thousand and twenty, we don't know where the equipment came from, and the origin of who had originally stolen the equipment is unknown. However, that wouldn't prevent us from moving forward with the use permit, should the planning commission decide to approve it. The other three findings that have to be made are Article twenty-seven, subsection eleven, subsection AT, that the use complies with all development standards in Article twenty-seven. That cut and paste is up there again. I'm sorry about that. Number two, the applicant is qualified to make the application. Number three, the applicant, application complies with the qualifications of a use permit found in Article twenty-seven. We evaluated this for SEQA twice. Both times, we found that there was potential for impacts in the following areas: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal resources, geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, noise, transportation, wildfire, cumulative impacts, which is essentially the mandatory findings of significance. Change the slide. There we go. The bigger question is whether we can even move forward with it if, in fact, this rises to the level of triggering an environmental impact report. Staff initially didn't think it did. However, SEQA is fairly specific in terms of when, when a project rises to the level of significant, and to paraphrase it, it's whenever impacts cannot be adequately mitigated that would trigger an environmental impact report. So preparation of an EIR is required when the lead agency determines that a proposed project would have one or more significant impacts on the environment based on a preliminary review of the project, SEQA Guidelines Section fifteen oh-six oh, or the completion of initial study, State SEQA Guidelines fifteen point oh-six three. The decision to prepare an EIR based on substantial evidence and in light of the whole of the record before the lead agency, SEQA Section fifteen oh-six four. So the question is, can the removal of one hundred and thirty blue oaks be mitigated? These are mature trees, by the way. My response was unknown but highly unlikely. The project represents the removal of three-plus acres of blue oak trees. The tree removal and replacement plan is insufficient in its overall review of all potential impacts resulting from the activity. So the impacts associated with the tree removal go well beyond just the simple removal of trees. It affects the earth. It potentially affects erosion. It probably would reduce the amount of water requirements based on the removal of trees, but if you're going to replace it a three-to-one ratio, we have not evaluated the difference in water demands from mature trees versus saplings. So the water issue is highly unknown at this point. We don't know what impact it would do to erosion, sedimentation. The applicant has prepared engineered drawings for erosion control, and so to that extent, they have addressed in part erosion control and runoff associated with the project. However, this represents a three-acre area of potential erosion producing stormwater. And so the amount of stormwater generated from these forty buildings, thirty-six greenhouses and four drying buildings, could be significant. If you combine that with the soil disturbance associated with the removal of one hundred and thirty blue oak trees, the overall impact to that is unknown.
Well, Eric, I would also add, in terms of species protection and habitat, it would be years before those trees were mature and capable of providing what the existing trees can provide.
Well, I think that's a position that the Audubon Society and the Coastal Oak Society have made, and that, you know, internally, we determine that, you know, it would not be a mitigatable impact, not in the immediate sense, anyway. Maybe over a twenty, thirty, or forty-year period, it could be restored to what's presently out there. But you're right. You're right. The impacts are pretty obvious and pretty significant. I estimated each tree would displace no less than a cubic yard of dirt, and if you multiply that by one hundred and thirty trees, well, that takes it above the trigger for a simple grading permit. And I may be grossly understating the amount of dirt that would be relocated as a result of this project.
Eric, with respect to the EIR, I'm sorry, I deleted it. You sent a message to the Math Town Hall summarizing We Grow recently, and I believe that one of the bullet points was that there was never, the applicant never made any attempt to provide an EIR or respond?
Well, I think they probably would have had we known that it rose to that level.
What was the point of that bullet point, then, in the mail, email you sent to Math?
I'd have to look at it.
Okay.
I honestly can't remember. This project has morphed over the last two years, in part because we're a little more sophisticated now reviewing our SEQA evaluations. You know, when these cannabis projects first came through, we reviewed the twenty-one SEQA categories, but there were a lot of hidden things associated with those categories that we are becoming more and more aware of, with the more knowledge that we gain about how to interpret SEQA and so forth. Public comments, they're extensive. They have come in as recently as this morning. There were three that I received too late to be able to green-sheet. They were from Krieger. Olivia queued, and I believe her last name is Moxley, and so I want to note those. The likelihood of an appeal on this, no matter what the outcome is, is very high, and any comments that we receive that were too late to give to the planning commission need to be made part of the record. So I did want to indicate that we had received some last-minute comments. The other thing that relates to public comments is we have a cutoff of when we post comments to the website, and I was asked yesterday why the comments that came in this week were not posted. The answer is simple. We just have a deadline, and in projects like this, where we've received probably close to one hundred and fifty public comments, it's extremely labor-intensive to process comments individually. Not only do we have to post them, but we also have to respond, indicating that we've received them, and we have to indicate, you know, within all the materials, how many we have, what the substance of the comments is. And in the case of this project, right glasses on here. There tended to be a recurring theme in most of the complaints, and it had to do with traffic, security, and safety, conflicting uses within existing neighborhood, water, power, loss of animal habitat, light pollution, and odor. There are other concerns that were raised, but those tend to be the most prolific themes in the comments that were received. So recommendation. Project is controversial. It has been ever since it went to the planning commission back in April of two thousand and twenty-one. Staff has evaluated the potential environmental impacts and has found that an environmental impact report is required due to the proposed loss of blue oak trees. Based on this, staff recommends that the PC do not adopt addendum for the initial study, IS twenty dash twenty-five, and ultimately, this would lead to a recommendation of denial. So we're recommending that the planning commission deny use permit twenty dash twenty-two due to unmitigated impacts to the site and the surrounding area that have not been addressed adequately through the SEQA evaluation. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Eric.
Madam Chair, could I just, Eric, very briefly, I did, I did find your email to Math, and since I made a reference to it, I wanted to share it with my colleagues and with the public. The relevant portion of the message says, "Removal of one hundred and thirty oak trees as proposed rises to the level of requiring an EIR. No EIR was submitted by the applicant or requested by the applicant."
Any other questions for staff or for the applicant before we open it up for a public comment?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Please.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, since there seems to be a little bit of confusion on SEQA, when an MND applies and when an EIR applies. Mitigated negative declaration, as its name implies or indicates, requires that all, that your commission make the finding that all of the identified impacts be mitigated to less than significant. If you can make that finding, then you can adopt the mitigated negative declaration. By definition, then, if there are, there are any impacts that cannot be mitigated to less than significant, then a mitigated negative declaration is not the appropriate vehicle under SEQA in which to evaluate the project, and an EIR must be performed. It is not the applicant's responsibility to determine whether or not an EIR is required. EIR, as defined, or as described by SEQA, is the heart of SEQA. It is where the lead agency begins, and then as they go through their analysis, they can eventually determine that maybe all of the impacts that they have identified could be mitigated, and therefore, a negative declaration is appropriate. But in theory, the agency determines whether or not an EIR is appropriate in a particular case for a particular project. If you agree with staff, and there's, and staff's assessment that any of the impacts, including the impacts of the removal of the oak trees, is, are unable to be mitigated to less than significant, then the mitigated negative declaration cannot be adopted here.
But it can be rejected.
Well, it would need to be rejected. If you, if you agree that not all of, if your commission agrees with staff's assessment that not all of the impacts for this project can be mitigated to, or have been through this report and all of the information provided to staff, I mean, provided by staff, shows that there is no, that there are impacts, any impacts, that cannot be mitigated to less than significant, then a mitigated negative declaration can, finding cannot be made, and a rejection will be required.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand this, the verbiage that was provided for us is called a mitigated negative declaration.
Correct.
Have, have you reviewed that recommended motion, and does it look appropriate to you?
Well, staff here is recommending a denial of the mitigated negative declaration, or denial that you, that your commission not adopt. So I'm simply saying, I'm not recommending that you go one way or the other. I'm simply clarifying that in order to, if, if you have gone through the material and the evidence before you, and you are, and you are trying to make a determination as to whether or not you would, you would approve or deny, you would adopt or deny a mitigated negative declaration, if there is in the evidence in front of you, evidence that shows that any of the impacts have not been mitigated to less than significant, then you would vote no on the motion for adopting a mitigated negative declaration. But you would have to make that determination on your own, as to whether, with the evidence in front of you. In this case, if you did make that finding, you would be, you would be agreeing with staff. I'm not saying you have to agree with staff.
Right.
Or that, right. It would depend on your individual analysis as commissioners. But a mitigated negative declaration cannot move forward if any of the impacts have not been mitigated to less than significant. That is the, it is not the correct vehicle under SEQA for analysis in those circumstances.
Thank you for that. If the commissioners do not have any further questions for the applicant or for staff, I will go ahead and open this item up for public comment.
Would we be able?
Do you want to?
Yep, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Sufjan Hamoda with Lake County Planning Consultants. The rest of our team is on Zoom, so if we could have, we have a few brief statements, and then I can answer any questions.
Sure.
If Andrew Azami could be unmuted for the entire agenda item, that'd be appreciated so he can comment freely. He's representing the client as well. So Andrew, if you'd like to start us off.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you okay.
Okay, great, thank you. I, I apologize, I can't be there in person. I'm actually on a family vacation this week, believe it or not.
Before you get to, to, into your comment, can you repeat your first and last name for us one more time, please?
Absolutely. My first name is Andrew, and my last name is Azami, A-Z-A-R-M-I.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. Yeah, and so, like I said, I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. I'm out of town this week, and that's why I'm attending remotely. I am coun- I am counsel for the applicant, WeGrow. Applicant's land use consultant, Sofyan, is there with you, as you know. And he can address any of the granular questions if the commission may have any specific to the project. I'd like to just briefly provide an overview of the procedural history on this application, which here is critical because it's going to comprise the administrative record. For example, if, in the event there is litigation, this will be the administrative record. This project application was filed approximately two years ago. Over a year ago, it was found by the department, by the community development department, by staff, to be fully compliant with the Lake County zoning ordinance, even meeting the requirements for early activation. Almost a year ago, this commission unanimously approved this project with the department at that time recommending approval of a mitigated negative declaration. The approval was appealed by a neighboring property owner's opposition and went to the Board of Supervisors, where it was denied without prejudice based on the fact that the CDD, the department, had uploaded an incorrect earlier version of the project site plan. To be clear, applicant did not do this. This was, this was, this was done, you know, by the county. So since then, the project has not changed in scope or content at all since, from what was previously approved. Yet, when it went back after the Board of Supervisors, when we went back into the department, the department began asking for many new issues it wanted addressed or studied. You know, characterized as throwing down a successive series of hoops. They wanted applicant to jump through. Applicant jumped through each and every hoop the department asked it to jump through. A process which should have taken a couple months, given denial was without prejudice. And so there was no delay in the reapplication. And the fact that the project had not changed one bit in terms of scope or content has, has nonetheless taken close to a year just to be back on the commission's agenda. You know, and then at the last minute, this is just a few weeks ago, without any consultation or really any advance warning, the department did what, you know, I can only describe as a stunning about face. Now recommending that the project, which has always been recommended for approval, and which was unanimously approved by this planning commission a year ago, and which has not changed one iota, now recommending that the project be denied, even though nothing has changed since before it was unanimously approved. Respectfully, this is unfair treatment towards the applicant, in my view. I recognize there is some vocal opposition. That's not the first time that's happened in a project in California. That's, but the same opposition was present when the commission approved the project last year. It was the same points were raised then, and nothing has changed about the project. If anything, the project is more meritorious than when it was previously approved as key studies were prepared to address concerns raised, such as a hydrology study was prepared, a power, power supply analysis was undertaken. All of these were done at the request of staff, and, and, and the applicant complied with that. And the new, this new position, which is very new, we were notified about it a few weeks ago, and not really given much opportunity to address it, is, I think it's, I think it's also arbitrary because it's not supported by the record. The department's staff report, which is, you know, there's been several iterations of the staff report, several versions exist, and this is the first time ever that the department has stated any position other than recommending approval in like two years now of procedure and across several versions of the report. And this same tree replacement plan has been in the application for over a year. And there was never any concern raised that that needed additional study or that, or certainly not that this would require a full-blown EIR. And then one of the last points I wanted to make is that, in my view, there's no substantial evidence in the record. And what I mean by that is, and I addressed this in a red, in a letter that I had wrote on behalf of the applicant, substantial evidence does not mean that someone says something is, is potential, potentially an impact. There has to be evidence of a potential impact in the record. And here, an initial study was prepared, which indicate, indicated how with the proposed tree replacement plan, any potential impact would be mitigated to a level of less than significant. There has been no countervailing study. Not one study whatsoever has been put into the record that would suggest that that was not mitigating it down to a less than significant level. And that's, the reason why I raise that is because that is the standard that SEQA applies when it gets to courts. If a decision is made that there was an impact, it has to be supported by substantial evidence. And the, and the problem here is that the only evidence supports that it can be mitigated. And although there was complaints raised, the complaint itself is not substantial evidence. There has to be some additional study that was proposed, which showed that there actually would be an impact. There has to be some cogent articulation of the substantial evidence, and that is really missing here. And, you know, I wanted to point out on this idea of an EIR, we are not aware of any similar project similar to this, cannabis or otherwise, which has been required to undergo a full-blown EAR. Projects have been approved, cannabis projects have been approved by the county without a tree removal plans or with tree removal plans that were similar to this project. We were not able to find any project where a full-blown EAR was required that was comparable to this project. And I think that that further indicates that the project is being treated arbitrarily, and that's what the law prohibits counties from proceeding in that manner. So we would respectfully ask that you approve the project. That would be, we think that's proper. It's a proper use of the properties rural zoning designation. It complies with the ordinance. But if the commission is inclined to seek further study on the tree replacement plan, we urge the commission to only require that an additional updated initial study and analysis be required, and that a full-blown EIR not be required. Because an EIR, you know, that's a, that's a very lengthy and detailed process. That would cause enormous additional delay and additional expense, likely up to a year or more, hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional, additional expense potentially. And, you know, again, we're not aware of any similar project, cannabis or otherwise, which has been required to undergo a full-blown EAR that was similar to this project. And so with that, I'll stop. I would urge the, the commission to think about what has changed since it was previously approved, because nothing has changed, and in terms of the project itself. And so I would ask that the, that the commission actually approve the project. But if it's not going to do that, I would ask that it only require that an additional initial study first be prepared on the tree removal plan, and that it then come back before the commission. Because that's something that I think would address this issue. If that's what needs to be done, then we can address that issue. But we were not really given that opportunity prior to the hearing. And with that, I will stop, and of course Sofyan is able to answer any granular questions you may have about the project, and I thank you very much for your consideration. And I do again apologize for not being there in person.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
I, I would like to add a couple more comments before we open it up.
Sure.
So we have worked really closely with the department for, for two years now. However, just 17 days ago, we were notified that their position would change due to the tree removal. The project has gone through, you know, as we mentioned, two years of review, one planning commission unanimous approval, two separate initial studies completed seven months apart, multiple planning commission hearings scheduled for approval, but just 17 days ago, we were notified that an EIR was required. So I do actually want to draw specific attention to the initial studies that were completed. Both did include the tree removal to be less than significant. I also want to read the last staff report, which was going for recommendation on October 28th. That planning commission had been postponed because of notification, the entire one. The staff report read, asks if the applicant complies with the qualification of a permit described in Chapter 21, Article 27. The response, and I quote, says, "The power deficiency and proposed tree removal and replacement proposed can be mitigated through specific conditions of approval. The application was to be, was determined to be complete after a thorough review to verify that all submittal requirements were met." We don't understand how this decision changed 17 days ago when no new information has come to us. We come with the same project to the planning commission with greater certainty. As we've outlined, we had, we'd been requested to do a water availability analysis, traffic pattern study, and a tree revegetation. We've worked with multiple agencies. We've had CDD, code enforcement, and CDFW all on the site throughout the two years. We've been asked to provide multiple studies, and we always will. If staff questions the impacts based on the current studies, further analysis of the trees' removal can be provided. And I did upload a letter that I want to draw attention to, to the e-comment section from the biologist who completed the tree study. "We don't believe an EIR is necessary, nor is it fair after the review that this project has gone through." Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anybody else on your team want to speak before we open it up?
Nope, not this time.
Excuse me. Madam, Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
I just wanted to clarify what fair argument standard is for requiring an EIR. Technically, under, under SEQA, an EIR must be prepared when it can be fairly argued based on substantial evidence in light of the entire record that a project may have a significant effect on the environment. It is, this is a low standard. Fairly argued means that there is evidence of the potential for impact in the administrative record before you or before the agency. Impacts include direct, indirect, and cumulative contributions. And may have, meaning that it may have an impact, means that the evidence does not need to be absolute or unequivocal. So it isn't, it isn't necessary that your commission have a series of reports that, that contradict the applicant's material or reports that they have presided, prevent, provided, excuse me, to find contrary to their preferred outcome. If there is, and even if staff had presented with, presented you with the same recommendations that had come with any other project that included approval, you are not required to make those findings. You are not required to weigh the evidence as staff has presented it to you. You're required to consider all of the evidence with as you see fit and make a determination based on that evidence in front of you. If that evidence leads you to, to a conclusion that is contrary to a recommendation that staff has provided to you, then you may vote based on your determination as informed by the evidence.
Okay. Thank you for that. You're good? Okay, we will go ahead and open it up for public comment. We'll start. Yes, I have. We'll start with anybody in chambers who wishes to speak on this topic, and then we will go over to the Zoom room. Please be sure when you approach the podium to state your first and last name. There's also a little green sheet of paper you can fill out, and you will have three minutes.
Hey, good morning.
Good afternoon.
Oh, good afternoon.
It is.
Getting hungry. My, my name is Dan Levine, and I live in close proximity to the proposed WeGrow operation. And I urge the planning commission to reject this large commercial grow application, which includes a distribution center. And let's be clear about this. As far as I can remember, there's been a lot of changes in this, in this project's application. The first round, there was no mention of cutting down any oak trees. And then all of a sudden, there was a power requirement, started out at 3,000 amps, and then in another document went up to 40,000 amps. So there's, there's that, and along with the, the trips per day. In the initial study, it ranged anywhere from 10 to 20 trips a day to 40 to 80 trips per day. So I want to know, you know, where these numbers are coming from and how come they changed so much. And the initial study has been severely flawed since the beginning. The further this application for major permit goes, the more omissions and errors have surfaced. The proximity to existing high-density population was not adequately, adequately addressed as well as the other problems like water, noise, odor, traffic, crime, power use, excavation, and runoff. This project should have never made it out of plan check, a plan review, considering the wide-ranging significant negative impacts. Deficiency of this initial study, along with the overwhelming opposition from the nearby communities, dictate that this project be denied. And an MND, the mitigated negative declaration, shouldn't be a, a green ticket to a project. I mean, the, 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 the end goal seems to, for a mitigated negative declaration seems to be to reduce the significant negative impacts just down to, just below unbearable levels. I mean, if you reduce a negative impact from noise a little bit, you're still going to have noise. If you reduce the odor impact a little bit, you're still going to have odor. We're still going to have some crime and possibly some wells going dry. And that's even with these mitigated negative declarations in place. So, so collectively, all these impacts that have been mitigated, collectively, it's still a huge impact on the community. And so, once again, I just urge that you deny and deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? I'd have been in chambers before I open it up to the Zoom room. Hello. Just be sure to state your first and last name for me, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then you want us to fill out one of these and leave it here?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Monica Rosenthal, and I also want to point out that I am the chair of the Math Group, but I am not here speaking for Math. I am here speaking for myself as a resident of Middletown. A couple of things. First off is, I also oppose this project. But a couple of things I want to address that the speaker for the applicant had talked about was, was if this was a thorough application from the get-go, the hydrology report, the explanation of the power use would have all been included in that first report. Like the speaker that spoke just before me, I have, I've kind of gotten confused in this whole process because it does seem like there are a number of changes. There is an attorney for the applicant that submitted materials, and in that package and the attachments that he included in the staff report, it talked about 20 to 30 trees being removed. And that's what was in the previous application that went forward, and now all of a sudden, it's 130 trees. So there have been many changes that need to be considered in this, in the process as this moves, moves forward. So again, I urge this commission to please deny this project. I'd also like to state or, or just bring up briefly, if we could get some clarity, as Eric Porter had brought up, that there is a deadline in the process for submitting public comments. And there's, especially for this type of a project that is so controversial that we knew was controversial. There is also in the system, there's 72 hours that the public gets notified of the project being on your calendar and gets all that information. So 72 hours, then, you know, that, it's a very, very short timeframe of window then for the public to respond. And so then if the public can't get their information into you to be heard and considered, again, there's something here in the system that I'm hoping that we can correct and fix, and I would very much like to know what the deadline is for that, for those public comments to get in, to be then put on with the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Monica.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Nagelson, and my wife and I own property that is immediately adjacent to the, the location of this, of the applicant's proposed project. I want to express my appreciation to the department for sticking with this, for listening to the comments that were submitted, which Eric did a great job of listing, kind of the, the main things that the people objected to. They're all significant, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a victory for the process that staff was able to go back and look at these things and determine that, yeah, okay, maybe we didn't, maybe we underestimated the impact of some of these factors, and to change their recommendation. And I think that's, that's something that the commission should really be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak in chambers before I open it up to the Zoom room?
Good afternoon. My name is Jesse Kood, and I do have a, a couple of things that I'd like to bring to the attention, which I know you already have talked about some of them. The number one thing that I have a problem with is the, besides the tree removal, is the power. That engineered report that you guys received from DTS, it doesn't include several of the things that have been required by the initial study. The power for the odor control filtration systems that are supposed to be in every greenhouse was not included in that engineered study. Also perimeter lighting, which is required by the initial study, was not included. There's no room in a 200 amp service to add all that. The other thing is air conditioning. If this, if these greenhouses are to be sealed, it's going to be an oven in those greenhouses. There has to be air conditioning, or the plants will die. The only other thing I wanted to talk about was the, Eric referred to engineer drawings for stormwater runoff. I never saw those, if they're there. I went through everything, and there's no engineer drawings. You have a report from our engineer that we hired that does identify the stormwater runoff, and it's huge. I don't have the numbers. You can look them up. You have the report. And like somebody else said, this is a cumulative thing. The other thing that is, was not done by an engineer was the soil removal. There's going to be, according to our engineer, over 120 yards of soil that is going to be cut and filled, and that is not identified anywhere in their application. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Jason Craig, a heavy equipment operator, been in the dirt industry a long time. It's not 120 yards, it's 120,000 yards. So when you're developing a nine-acre parcel, all the runoff goes down into Puda Creek. If that's going to affect Puda Creek, it is going to affect all the drainage, all the ecosystem, all through there. Removing 130 trees that are 80, 100-plus years old, it's going to take that long to get them back mature. So it's not going to be effective right now, but a long time down the road, it could be. And then removing all of those trees, you mentioned that it was a quarter yard of dirt, I think you mentioned. It's going to be yardage of dirt for each tree. And then that goes and drains off into all the drainage system once again. An EIR, if this goes on, I hope it's denied, but if it does, an EIR is absolutely required. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else feeling like they want to speak before I open it up to the Zoom room? Okay. Jake? Jake?
Yes. We, one hand raised in the Zoom room. Shannon, I have given you permission to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, my name is Shannon Williams, and I just wanted to, I sent a letter to everybody already, but I just kind of wanted to reiterate here. So as Eric pointed out, in order to approve a major use permit, the number one requirement is that the proposed use of the property will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons who live and work in the vicinity of the property. And I just want to take a quick moment to bring your attention to some of the recommendations by those who are experts here in Lake County as it relates to all of those things. And these are in the file that's online. But per our local CHP commander, in addition to serious concerns on behalf of the California Highway Patrol about this specific proposal and location, it is imperative to note that there still is an open felony case still pending for this address. Per Mr. Keithley, Lake County Sheriff's Office, in his professional opinion, it will have a dramatic negative impact of this cultivation site far outweighs the monetary gains that the county of Lake earns, and he feels that both Middletown and Hidden Valley Lake will be negatively impacted due to the location of the grow site. Additionally, the California Wildfire Foundation shares the concerns of the Red Bud, Red Bud Audubon Society, noting that there are severe impacts on the plants, animals, inadequacy of the environmental analysis, the inadequacy of proposed mitigation, and they strongly urge the county to prohibit the advancement of the project. Per page 12 of the staff report, the subject site is within the Middletown area plan's boundary, and it was noted by the Middletown area town hall that they wrote a letter in unanimous objection to the project. Our own Lake County air quality engineer stated that the odors can travel well over a mile, so odor impacts without mitigation are expected to be significant, especially given the site is very close to community park and residential areas, as well as significant dust impacts. The senior water resources engineer of Lake County noted a variety of discrepancies and concerns on the initial well report and actual well driller report, including actual depth of well, water level, production. There's some discrepancies there. Scott DeLeon, Director of Public Works, stated that the roads impacted are designed for residential street traffic, and they are not suitable for heavy commercial trucks or high volumes of traffic, among other concerns. So basically, I feel like the idea that this property is rural is pretty false. You can see that the agency is employed and authorized to make decisions on behalf of our government. All agree that this project will have significant detrimental impacts on neighboring residential areas, roads, odors, dust, water, all of these things. Zoning was drawn up for our county many years ago, and at that time, I'm sure this parcel was quite rural. And when the exclusion zones were drawn up for the county, despite best intentions, I'm sure this was also lumped in. But if you look at a map, you will see that these parcels are literally surrounded on every side by residential property. The other thing you want to note is that the-
It's been, your, your three minutes is up. I, I do appreciate your, your comments.
Sure.
If you want to take a couple of seconds and, and wrap it up, you're, you're more than welcome. I didn't want to just completely cut you off.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I would note also that the fact that this applicant also started building without permits in place, and then the county had to remove them, also speaks to the character of the applicant, and that also should be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake, is there any other hands?
At this time, there are, a hand just came up. I would like to take this chance or moment to speak to, we did have a new phone participant join. You can raise your hand by dialing star nine. The hand I have raised up first here is from Glenn Goodman. Glenn, I've given you permission to speak, and it looks like you are unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
My name is Glenn Goodman. I would like to speak to the issue of the trees. I support staff's recommendation for denial. And what I want to raise today is the issue of how much we are willing to sacrifice as a county for added revenue. And it seems like this situation is a, is a real good case of where the sacrifice far exceeds anything we could ever possibly expect to gain from it. When we, I, a lot of people have spoken to me and said that the rollout of 64 has been very disappointing, and that the, the tendency of the county to permit, permit huge grows is alarming as well. Because what we're, what we're looking at is sacrificing the county. Bulldozing landscape and trees for revenue is, is a bad deal. And I, I think we need to rethink this as a county as to just what we're willing to sacrifice. It used to be farms. When, when we voted on 64, we thought of these as farms. Now they refer to themselves as an industry. And that's exactly what this is, is it's an industrial site. And it just seems to me like that is not what we as citizens signed on to, and, and it is not a good deal for the county, and I encourage denial. I moved here about 30 years ago, and I had a bunch of oak trees, and still do. There's a whole bunch of little ones, two feet to four feet. They've all grown about a foot or two in 30 years, and the big ones haven't changed in size noticeably at all. So the idea that we're just going to plant new trees, and they're going to grow back in our grandchildren's lifetime is optimistic. I, I encourage denial of this, and, and thanks, thank you for, for all you've done.
Thank you for your comment. Jake, is there anyone, any other hands raised in the Zoom room?
Yes, we do have at this time one more hand raised from phone 6205. I have given you permission to speak. It looks like you are unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Good morning, or good afternoon. This is Bart Levinson. I am, I'm a property owner in the area and went through the valley fire. And I'd like to point out something that hasn't been addressed, although Scott DeLeon seems to have tried to say something about the roads not being suitable for commercial use. These projects are going to involve the very few evacuation routes available to thousands of people. And we have already been through this situation, and we've had fire threats since 2015. The degradation of the road by 40 to 80 trucks per day has not been adequately addressed, and the effects of the vital only evacuation routes for an entire community hasn't been acknowledged at all. I would like to point out that this application made in the past two years was made during a time of unprecedented change. Wildfires, COVID, now drought. There may not be regulations in place, I don't know, maybe there are. But if there aren't, we have to look at what our situation is now, because our crisis is now. It is completely inappropriate for a project like this. Those 40 to 80 trucks are going to be going past where schools, where elementary schools have to exit. That is not being taken into consideration. The community is not being considered, and that's inexcusable. I recommend denial.
Jake, is there anyone else in the Zoom room?
No, at this time, there are no additional hands raised.
I don't believe anyone wishes to speak in chambers. Do you want to say anything before I close public comment as far as the applicant or the consultant?
I mean, there's obviously a lot to comment to. I'll answer, I, I wrote down notes, so I'll try and go down as many as I can here really quickly.
Sure.
To start off, any changes that started from this project, I want to, it's not requested by staff, but the changes came up during the re-reviews of the project as it kept going. For example, the power, the change to it was, was changed on our end. However, that was because staff thought there would be a potential impact, and so a mitigation for it, the applicant opted to remove that portion of it for the energy upgrade. The reason for the additional studies were directly requested by staff, including the hydrology report and the traffic study. The discrepancies between the 20 and 40 trips, as the management plan and the initial study outlines, 20 would be the least amount of employees, 40 would be the most, depending on the season, especially with the change of no artificial lighting, the project would be heavily dependent upon lighting. So during the off, there, there would be more of an off-season. I'm not saying it looked like an outdoor cultivation, but it is, again, going to be dependent upon natural lighting. The, the question and comment for, for the criminal acts, whatever's currently on the property, I want to read an email that is on record. I, I did submit it to county staff quite a while ago, and it is from CHP. Give me one second here. So on March 16th, I ask Lisa Torrey from CHP for an update on the situation. Is there a recommended route of action for the newest property owner to take in order to make sure that anything related to her property is not in connection to her name or her project? And the response, March 16, 2021, says, I'm not too sure about, Lisa says, I'm not too sure about that, but I think as long as she is not named in an existing case, I do not see how she could be associated with that activity. So I want to bring that to record as well. In term, in terms of other comments, CHP, odor, again, we believe odor is completely being, or not believe, it is being completely mitigated for within enclosed structures. Traffic study, we had an intense traffic study completed, and I want to read part of those conclusions to address the numerous comments regarding traffic. So DTN Civil Engineering states, based on the, based on the Highway Capacity Manual Sixth Edition, a two-lane local street such as found within the subdivision where WeGrow is located can handle an AADT of 1,000 trips per day. The roads within, within the subdivision meet Lake County standards with all slopes under 15% and roadway widths greater than 20. The existing roadway conditions can easily handle a total traffic count of 336 vehicles per day, and that is calculated based on the residents, with no additional approvals or recommendations, recommendations being made. We did also adhere to all of the conditions of approval that staff had requested to opt in to put in the signage along Tinlin Drive, and also to work with, we never got an answer on it, but whoever controls the roadway upgrades for that subdivision, because it is not through the county, it's through another entity. The last thing, and related to removal, the biological study, and I want to quote one section of it. So 130 blue oak trees will be removed and replanted in four areas throughout the subject property at a mitigation of three to one. Although oak stand could potentially provide habitats, the trees are at the end of their lifespan and are mature. Ripplant and remature planting will provide lasting habitat in the future decades. That goes along with the conclusions found in all three studies, provided that the habitat is not suitable for any sensitive species currently. There have been three different site visits, three different biological studies completed for that. If you have any other questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Before I bring it back to the commission, I'm just looking around, no. Public comment is still open, so you're welcome to, to say something, and then I'm going to close public comment.
Hello, Jason Craig again. Roadway, the study on roadway, impact of our road. Spruce Grove Road has no fog line. It's fallen off into the drainage ditch. I have to be over the double yellow line going around turns. It cannot handle 1,000 extra vehicles or passing by a day. It just can't, period, fact. Our roadway, Tinlin-Jacklin, is not a main highway. It is a residential road that all who live there have with the county a fund to maintain our roads. Not anybody else, it's us. It cannot handle 1,000 vehicles or 80 people, whatever number we want to put to it, it can't do it. Fact. So I don't know where these are coming from, but it's, it's false. Anyways, oh, one more thing. The theft on the, the equipment. I talked to the guy that evening. Fact, it was stolen. He stopped me thinking I was going to deliver his equipment. Come on, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Just please be sure to state your first and last name for me one more time.
Thank you. Yes, Monica Rosenthal. I wanted to add just so the applicant doesn't feel alone. In fact, if we do move forward, or if the applicant is requested to do an EIR, there was a Vineyard project that was also kind of near this area, just to the north of Hidden Valley Lake, that the applicant there actually volunteered a few years back to do the EIR in order to address all of these issues. So, and then the last thing I wanted to say is that one of the biggest problems, as some of the other speakers have brought up, and the Zoom speakers, one of the biggest problems with this particular project is it is a large commercial industrial project that is going into an area where in different areas it may conform, that it's not an exclusion zone, but the surrounding area all around it is developed with pretty intense residential, with families and kids, that the vehicles that go in and out of this, including while it's still classified as a drug at the federal level, will be driving through these residential areas. And so that's just kind of what's different and unique about this particular project is that it's not on the outskirts of an area. It is set surrounded by residential development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just have one more quick comment that I'm glad we're-
Wait, can you please just tell us your name one more time?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dan Levine.
Thank you.
And I'm glad to hear that we're, both sides are in agreement that there were changes to this application in the study as time went along. We're both in agreement on that now. And the fact that they're only saying that they need a 200-amp service, that's only what one house requires. They're going to have greenhouses the size of 13 football fields, and even if they don't have lights, they're going to have fans, or coolers, or odor control systems, and one about any peripheral lighting. I mean, 200 amps is just for one house, not for 13 football field-sized structures, along with a dwelling that's already exists there, that probably needs that 200-amp service just for the dwelling. So to think that this huge commercial operation is going to get by with one 200-amp panel is pretty ludicrous. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. In all fairness, Jake, is there any hands in the Zoom room?
Yes, I was actually meaning to speak up on that. I do have a repeat hand raised in the Zoom room at this time.
Hey, why not?
All right. Phone 6205, I have given you permission to speak. And it looks like you are unmuted. Yes, yes, you are muted. Please confirm your first and last name.
Bart Levinson, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. This project refers to it being in the proximity of Putah Creek, and I think it's essential that everyone present be reminded of what Putah Creek is. It is the main watershed for Lake Berriessa that provides the water supply for most of the Bay Area. So it's not insignificant to lose 130 mature oak trees and bring in 40 to 80 trucks per day and create intense industrial use in the middle of a residential area. And again, I want to ask everybody to remember the last time they were required to evacuate, that what happens when a fire is near, and you get the notice, and everybody pours out onto the same streets. These streets are not built to handle even the existing evacuation, never mind this new kind of industrial use. Thank you.
Thank you. I am, Jake, is there any other hands in the Zoom room?
Yes, I do have another hand that came up here. Jason, I have given you permission to unmute. And it looks like you are muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Hi, my name is Jason Kraus. I'm an area resident, and I'll be brief, but a little background, I'm a retired firefighter, still in fire suppression business, and have responded to this area for active fires. And just to follow up on the traffic study, what people are saying about the roadways, the fuel loading along Spruce Grove Road is significant, it's dense, ladder fuels and the topography all contribute to a very dangerous evacuation route. And frankly, it's a very dangerous area to respond to, and it's something we address every time we respond here for a fire, with just the fuel loading and the rapid rate of spread. And that really makes it not conducive to allowing any type of commercial business back here, especially one that accesses a residential area, where you have the communities of Rimrock Ranch and Hidden Valley also having to utilize that area as an evacuation route. And what they've said about Spruce Grove Road is correct. The shoulders are disappearing, you have heavy power lines and comm lines along the road, along with heavily fuel loading along the road, and they're very dangerous for people trying to leave when you have a fire with a rapid rate of spread. And I think that's something that needs to be considered on the heels of the traffic study. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Jake, is that it?
Okay, yeah, it looks like I don't have any more hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and officially close public comment, and bring it back to the commission for a little bit of discussion. And personally, I want to thank everyone for taking the time to show up and voice your opinions, and staff for revisiting the application and providing us with that updated information as well. Does anyone have anything to say? Go ahead.
Yes, and I'll try to be brief. I want to thank the applicant for his patience. I know that it can be a very frustrating process. This is a democracy. We're trying to do it as best we can. One thing that has changed since the last time this came before the commission is the commission itself has changed. I was not at that meeting. I did see it online, I did watch it. And my comments, I just want to thank Eric for putting a lot of effort into this. I really learned a lot from the project. I do think that the oak removal is not mitigable. I want to thank Shannon Williams. She read what I was going to read about how the, this particular case would be detrimental to the county and its residents for many reasons. In short, I think that it's incompatible with the neighborhood. I mean, I think that's what we're seeing here today, and it sounds like my three minutes are up, so.
Oh, you don't, yeah.
No, I don't, I don't think there's any, there have been lots and lots of very articulate comments. Thank you. I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh, I'd like to make a couple of comments beforehand. Yeah, I appreciate Sufjan's work. It's just as much work as goes into the application as Eric, but in this case, Eric, I think you've done yeoman's work, and you know this material intimately. I don't agree with the applicant's attorney that nothing has changed. I think a lot has changed, and not only in terms of the due diligence of staff, but by virtue of the fact that you've brought more information about electricity, the applicant and others. Those are all things that, in my opinion, we did not understand adequately at the time the commission first considered this. I have, I don't see any way to mitigate the loss of the blue oak. I do not believe that that's enough power to run the operation and to not put the neighborhood at risk. And I've never been satisfied with the opacity of the applicant when it comes to the question of the open CHP case file, and I was on record about that at the last hearing. So with those comments, I too am ready to proceed.
Before we go ahead and do that commissioner chop, as I just wanted to make sure I didn't forget about you if you wanted to say anything.
Sure, yeah, I do have a comment, actually. Thank you. So when this project first came up, I was the new commissioner, didn't know then what I know now, and I thought about that decision, and it haunted me. My concerns have grown for this project, and I feel like it's going to take many years for us to come out of this drought. The power required doesn't seem realistic, and the people's concerns, you know, they're real. I just don't, like I said earlier, like my concerns have grown a lot more for this project, and I wish that I knew, or the information that I know now about all these cannabis projects in the county, and how much they can affect communities. So with that being said, I'm ready to proceed.
Okay. It feels like we're all ready to go ahead and move forward, so if anyone is prepared to make a motion?
I felt that the staff recommendation fell a little bit short, and I would like to make the following motion. Based on the information in the staff report, the information presented, and the input received during today's public hearing, I move that the planning commission deny the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration based on initial study IS 20-25 for many reasons. I can repeat it if you like.
I don't know if we need legal counsel to comment on the changed motion. I, I mean materially, what you say is no different than what is presented to us as a, and the use of the term deny is, has legal implications in this. I'd be more comfortable going with what was prepared, and I don't really see a substantial difference between that motion and what you just offered.
Nicole, perhaps would like to comment?
You may adopt, you may make a motion in the language, oh, that you choose to make motion with, if a particular, I mean, the language in the report is a recommendation. And as long as the intent of the motion is clear, and the reasons are clear, then the motion offered by Commissioner Field is appropriate.
I guess, we don't approve initial studies per se. You used to deny the study. It's just simply not, I don't want to split hairs here, but-
It would be denied, it would deny the adoption of, because technically speaking, you would be adopting-
Correct.
-the declaration. So you're denying, denying the adoption, or denying the recommendation that you adopt.
Right.
The mitigated negative declaration.
I'll second, as amended.
I'm sorry?
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Thank you, Nicole.
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Based on the information in the staff report, the information presented, and the input received during today's public hearing, I move that the planning commission deny the request for major use permit file number UP 20-22.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Wait, before we do that.
I'm confused. That language you just read is-
It wasn't, it's not actually written down?
Well, I wrote it.
Oh, I see.
I wrote it down, if that helps. I can send it to you. I did send it to Nicole.
Or if you, or if you want to read what you wrote, and then if you can include-
I just feel like the reference to the oak trees, et cetera, that's-
Yeah, I would just-
-is important.
Oh, okay, why don't you go ahead and make the motion?
All right, I'm simply going to simply read it as prepared, as recommended. "I move that the planning commission deny file number UP 20-22 due to insufficient review of the project according to the California Environmental Quality Act as it relates to oak tree removal of 130 oak trees, and as it relates to treatment of soil erosion and drainage."
I second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Okay. Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries? Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. So that concludes item number four. If we, I don't have any office news to go over. I believe Director Darby will be present at our next meeting, correct? Any, any words from the commission before I adjourn it? Okay.
Thank you, Trish.
Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.